Call to order, today's regular meeting of the Jackson City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to the Jackson City Chambers. Let the record reflect that we have a quorum of five now. One joining us, Councilwoman Lee is joining us virtually. And we have four on the D S, and I believe Councilwoman Lee is will be joining us here shortly. We're going to go ahead and open up with the word of prayer. Want to introduce to you Pastor Scott Fortenberry of Soul City Church. Immediately following that, I would ask if Councilman Foot will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will we all please rise? Pastor? Make sure you hit the...
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come into this room recognizing that you are the ultimate authority. Lord, we also recognize that in scripture that we hear, Paul talking about each and every one of our elected officials being ultimately your servants. And so, Lord, we pray today that as a council, Lord, that they will wear that mantle, recognizing that they are serving you. Lord, in the Old Testament, we find the prophet Jeremiah saying that the king is to defend those who are defenseless. Lord, in doing that, we are honoring you. So, Lord, I pray today, Lord, that as we have thoughts, ideas, Lord, as we even may disagree on things, Lord, I pray that we are never disagreeable. Lord, I pray that you bring unity. Lord, I pray that you give an incredible vision for our great city, the city of Jackson. Lord, we thank you for being a God who reigns, Lord, who reigns supreme over all things. And so, Lord, we surrender ourselves to you and to your will for our lives and for our city. And we ask all of these things in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Want to say thank you to Pastor Fortenberry for his leadership in Ward Seven in the city of Jackson. Colleagues, before we get started with any announcements and get started with public comments, and we do have quite a few, we need to handle two emergency items. And the reason why we need to make sure that we handle them expeditiously, so they can go in and get them moving, because we're behind the eight ball on getting the equipment moved out of the Yudora Wilti. We have, we have two items that will come up. One has to deal with the copier that we lease, and the only company that can remove the copier out of Yudora Wilti is the company itself. And I believe that's R I C O H. I'm not going to, yeah, Rico, alright. And then the other is all of the other equipment that is left down. Of course, because that freight elevator is out, we need to get it out so that we can move forward. And we need to go in and do this expeditiously. And so, I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to go in and get these items on. Second. Alright, it's been moving properly, second to go ahead and to add. City Attorney, is it alright if I add both of them at the same time? Alright, to add, order accepting the quote of GetCom Inc. to relocate the Division of Publications from the Yudora Wilti facility located at 300 North State Street. And to also add, order ratifying the Division of Publications request to relocate equipment from 300 North State Street and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,123.90 to Rico. That, that's where the motion is second, for those two to be added to the agenda. All in favor? Alright, Councilwoman Lee?
Aye.
Alright, the item is now added to the agenda. Clerk, will we, let's start with the GetCom one first.
Order accept, order accepting the quote of GetCom Inc. to relocate the Division of Publications from Yudora Wilti facility located at 300 North State Street.
So, move. Alright, it's been moving properly, second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? All in favor? Alright, that item passes unanimously, six zero. Next item?
Order ratifying the Division of Publications request to relocate equipment from 300 North State Street and authorizing payment in the amount of $3,123.90 to Rico.
So, move.
Second.
It's been moving properly, second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Alright, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, item carries unanimously, that takes care, that was all the emergency items, right? That takes care of those. Alright, now we'll go back to the agenda. Before we start with public comments, before we start with public comments, it is always an extreme pleasure to introduce and to welcome and to allow our scholars to see how their local government operates. And so, I'm going to ask one of our most heartfelt former employees here, that is always going to be a part of the city, to come up and introduce his guest to us, Brother Martez Hopkins. And they hail from Boys and Girls Club at Sykes Park, South Jackson. Y'all give him a hand. Hit, hit, hit the green button.
Good morning. I bring you greetings from the Boys and Girls Club, Sykes, Ward Six. While I serve as the program director under the great leadership of Tina Brown, who was our unit director, to this prestigious council group and to the mayor. We really appreciate the opportunity to stand before you guys on today. We just simply here to get our youth excited about government. You know, a lot of times that, a lot of times the youth only learn about government when it's far too late. So, we want to, we want to try to get them excited about politics and policies and procedures right now. I want to thank my former boss, Councilman Aaron Banks, President Aaron Banks, for this opportunity to stand in front of you on today. I appreciate you guys. City Hall will always be my home. City Hall will always be my home. I love you guys so much. Thank you so much.
Introduce the scholars that are here.
Um, right now, beside me to my left, I have Mr. West with me. But I would love for our teen scholars to stand up, please. These, these group, these group of individuals are our, what we call our teen scholars in our Boys and Girls Club, from grade level seven all the way up to seniors in high school. We also have three of these individuals that will be traveling to DC this year. So, we're super duper proud of them and their accomplishments this school year.
Colleagues, anything, colleagues, that you would like to say? Dr. Omari, anything?
It's good to see you here.
Yes, ma'am. Always a pleasure.
Yes, and I'd just like to commend you on the good work that you're doing with these young people. And once again, say congratulations to all of you for your stellar performances, and keep up the good work. One day, we expect you to sit up here and run this city, okay?
Alright, anybody else? Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Hopkins. Thank you. Y'all give him another hand. Alright, now we'll go to public comments. We have several, the rules for public comments is that you have three minutes. Our clerk will raise, when you have 30 seconds left, will raise a yellow sign that says 30 seconds. And then, when your time is up, will raise a stop. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a lengthy agenda. And so, we ask that you will abide by our quorum and rules as we listen and hear your public comments. So, first we'll have Zinzel Mohammed stalking. Second call, Zinzel Mohammed on stalking. Alright, next we have Naim Metta. I hope I said that right. BAP's Charities. Yes.
Good evening. I'm J.R. Patel. I'm here with Naim Metta on behalf of BAPS Charities. And I just wanted to shed a light on all of you that we're going to be doing a walkathon on behalf of the American Cancer Society on August 3rd, and at the Liberty Park in Madison. And I wanted to cordially invite all of you to attend. It's a, not only are we doing this for the American Cancer Society, we're also doing this for the Community Foundation for Mississippi. And part of the proceeds from the walk is going to go towards the Jackson Police Department, as we are also going to contribute to that. One thing about BAPS Charities is it's a, it's a community-based foundation, based on what the community needs. For example, when Jackson had the water crisis, we were there to provide water for, for the community. We hail from the great Ward Ford. So, we, you know, we were there to support Mr. Brian Griselle, who is the LeBron James of councilmen. I have to, I have to butter him up somehow. Great man. But, you know, that, that, and that's what we, that's what BAPS Charities from Katrina, when, you know, all they had was cold food, and our BAPS Charities was there to provide hot food, things of that nature during COVID. We were there with masks and supplies and all of those needs. And so, that's one thing I wanted to tell you all about BAPS Charities. It's not just a national organization. It's a community-based, and that's what we do. We support the community. We're here for the Jackson community at all times. Whenever Mr. Ryan calls, we're here, we'll show up. And this is, that's why I wanted to come cordially invite you all to this on August 3rd and, and partake on what is a wonderful contribution to it and towards the American Cancer Society and, you know, the Community Foundation for Mississippi. So, thank you all, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And young man, just let me say, I, I understand that age might have some opinions, but LeBron James was not, was not the best, it was Michael Jordan. You, you were right. You were right. Alright, thank you so much. I appreciate you for letting us know of the good work you're doing. Alan Signal, I believe I said that right, Mississippi Track Stars?
Yeah, Senegal.
Senegal, alright.
Yes, it's okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good morning, good morning, good morning. I don't know if they can pull it up, but, yeah, Alan Senegal, Mississippi Track Stars. We have a nonprofit organization here in Jackson called Mississippi Track Stars. And our program have the unique honor of hosting the event, which would be held at Hughes Field and also at Millsaps. So, we asking the community to come out and support our youth. This July 4th through the 7th, we'll be at Hughes Field. And on the 5th, we'll be at Millsaps. So, we asking everyone to come out. We going to compete against Louisiana, Tennessee, and Alabama. And the kids who qualify have the opportunity to transfer and go to Nationals, which would be held at Texas A&amp;M, July 22nd to the 28th. So, asking you guys to please, please come out and support our youth. Questions? Yes, sir.
And not, not...
Sorry.
Yes, not a question, but I just want to basically just indicate how big this is. This is a, what, a tri-state area?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and to have it here in Ward Five at Hughes Field is certainly something that we certainly appreciate, appreciate neurotic. Again, JPS has provided that new facility over there. I think it's within a year old now. But we certainly appreciate it being organized, your efforts, and appreciate having it right here in the city of Jackson along Bobby Rush Boulevard at Hughes Field.
Oh, we thank you, we thank you. And if, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
And also, I just want to mention, we have Miss Heather Logan in the back. Heather is a member of Zouair Progressive Partnership. And her daughter, Brooklyn, she had Brooklyn. Brooklyn will be participating in this event as well. She's risen to this level. And so, we have good thoughts going out for her success.
Yes, sir. For more information, you guys can visit our website at mstrackstars.org. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Omari?
I'd like to thank you for organizing this event as well. And certainly, the city wants to provide you with as much support as possible. If you could get with our Communications Director, Melissa, and give her information, and we can push it out on social media as well.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Alright, thank you so much, and keep up the good work. Couple of my football players run for you as well.
What's their names?
Dre is one, call him Speedy.
Yeah, I know Dre.
Yeah, and Coach Country's son.
Yeah, Junior.
Junior, wide receiver. Then my son is Caleb.
Ah, okay.
Alright, thank you for, thank you for what you do. Alright, alright, next we have Geneva Johnson, issues in her community. This is a non-agenda item.
Okay. My name is Geneva Johnson, and I live in the Georgetown area. I've been the Georgetown Improvement Committee for about 50 years now. We're having a little problem. I have two homes in there probably. My husband lives in one, I live in the other one. And I went out of town, and while I was gone, he got hit. And in the process, this person found out that he was laying on the street and came by there and went into the house, stole his stuff out of his house, his wallet, his bank card, his watch, and my keys and his keys. And so, didn't know, well, he didn't know where I stayed. He didn't have my phone number. I don't fool with him, because I know what he does. And anyway, he had parked his car, and I had told him before, do not park your car in my driveway. And as a sign said, no parking, because sometime my auntie would come over and visit us, and she needs that space. Sometimes she stay over and have to go to hospital. But anyway, he parked his car in my driveway. And after parking the car in the driveway, he was seated in the house. He knew nobody was there, so he had access to my house. And so, I had to wind up getting a lot of keys made, because he had got my keys. My husband had to get new ID for the bank, and he could not get his money because of all of this was going on. And we called, he called me. I was out of town. I said, who is this? So, anyway, my daughter said, Mama, somebody named Bam Bam called you. I said, oh, no, no Bam Bam. I said, oh, yeah, I do, I do know him. So, anyway, he said that, he proceeded to say that you had my car towed. I said, you was in my driveway, and I asked you not to park in my driveway. And you knew that my husband had gotten hit. And so, you decided you were going to rob me and him. But anyway, he went in there, and I said, you're not getting your stuff back until you get my car out of, out of the pond, I think, from the tow truck picking it up. So, after he did that, he threatened me, he threatened my husband. He told me what he was going to do, burn up my house, his house too. I said, well, huh, do what you want. I said, because I'm not there anyway. And so, anyway, when he got home, he kept calling me, said it takes 300 something. So, what I'm, need to know, I called the police when I got him, got him in church, and I haven't heard anything about it. And this boy is a, is a pest to the community. So, I'm asking y'all, the council, to see, can we get something done by this? Because I know they can catch this guy. He done done everything, everybody that's talked, he does, they wind up dead, lamed, or whatever. And that's what he goes at, that's how he get his money. So, I need help.
Thank you so much. Ms. Johnson, there's a face that this council should remember, because she's on the planning board in historical preservation. And while she was in Alabama, checking on her sick daughter, these so-called loan shots, loan shocks, give you $10 and leave with $20 back. Well, they ran over the gentleman. We can't say, but we do know he took their keys. She talked to Capitol Police, they seem to say they can't find him. But he's on Powers Avenue every day near Ms. Johnson's home. This is the kind of terror that people in these inner-city neighborhoods are living with on a daily basis. Now, here someone can possibly run over a person, go in their home, take keys and cell phones for people, and nothing done. He's at that barber shop on Woodrow Wilson and Low Avenue every day. Anybody can tell him where he's at. If they want to find him, they can find him. It's a shame that these citizens have to live with this kind of fear or move out of Jackson. Why she, why should she have to move out of Jackson when her home is paid for? Why should she have another house? Now, this lady is 70-plus years young. They shouldn't have to do this. Now, you got Capitol Police, Jackson Police, we got all these police, but they won't do nothing in these inner-city poor neighborhoods. It's like these criminals think they scale over. This man should be off the street in Jackson. She came here today looking for help, because they afraid. I told her, come to City Hall and say something. I thought the chief might be here, so she could talk to the chief. But this does not make any sense that in Jackson, Mississippi, these criminals going to run this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. I'm sure that Mr. Gray will get with you. Raise your hand so she can see you.
Okay.
Alright, we'll, we'll get with you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have, well, let me go back. Is Zidzila Mohammed, did they ever make it in? Alright, Michael Gray Lewis, storm drainage, Ward One. Yes, sir. If you will, walk around, please.
Just good to go? Alright, good morning. My name is Michael Gray Lewis, and I am a forensic civil engineer that lives at 101 Dingen Drive in the Rollingwood subdivision. I'm here to address the stormwater drainage issues that are affecting the Rollingwood subdivision located in Ward One. There is critical, there is a critical drainage matter that needs immediate attention from the city of Jackson, specifically at 134 Yucca Drive and throughout our neighborhood. There is a stormwater pipe that has created a substantial sinkhole at 134 Yucca that is large enough to cause severe structural damage to the adjacent properties. I would also like to state that there are multiple drainage problems approximately 26 of the 94 properties within Rollingwood subdivision. There are many, many drainage easements throughout the Rollingwood subdivision, and these holes are becoming more and more apparent of right above and near these easements. Personally, I have a drainage easement in my yard that now has a sinkhole. Not only am I concerned for my children's safety, but for the health and safety of my neighbors and anyone else throughout the neighborhood. In conclusion, I'd like to ask that the city of Jackson please perform a complete and thorough drainage inspection of the stormwater culverts and stormwater piping system throughout the Rollingwood subdivision, and make the necessary repairs based on an expert's findings. Again, thank you for your time, and I'm willing to help in any way possible. There any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Lewis, for coming up to visit with us today. I know that, that river, I mean, Rollingwood is right there. When the river starts rising, Yucca Drive is about the first place that starts to get covered with water in the whole city of Jackson. And, and I was, but I was thinking back to the specific sinkhole. I went out there and visited.
Yes, sir.
And, and I was under the impression that Robert Lee had put things together in order to address that before he left. Does that, did not, not get addressed?
You are correct in a way. So, this has been an ongoing process for the last at least two and a half years with Robert Lee. And I don't want to talk bad about anybody, but he had mentioned previous two years that an emergency declaration had been already signed, and it just needed to be processed. It wasn't until Mr. Lee showed up, I think, the day before you visited the sinkhole, and he finally took a look at it firsthand. And again, this was a year and a half, two years after we initially brought it up to Mr. Lee at the time.
So, it, so the sinkhole has not been fixed?
Nothing, this, I believe on April 23rd, the council voted to replace the culverts at 134 with the sinkhole. No work has been done whatsoever to this, at this point. Delta Constructors is the construction firm that's supposed to be working on it. But also want to stress that this is not an isolated problem just to 134 Yucca. These existing culverts have been around since the neighborhood was built in the 50s and 60s. And so, you're talking about 70-year-old corrugated metal culverts in which the bottoms have rusted out. And as you mentioned, we have two creeks that run along the side. And so, we have a lot of stormwater culverts. And as a result, they're all starting to fail at the same time. So, in my professional opinion, I would recommend getting, going and inspecting these drainage culverts by a third-party expert, and then make repairs based on their findings. But you are correct, the 134 is the one that needs to be addressed ASAP. Her house could literally collapse any day.
Councilman Harden?
You, you mentioned your professional opinion.
Yes, sir.
What would that be?
I'm a forensic engineer and civil engineer.
Okay, civil engineer, okay. So, basically, you are aware that these type storm drains require routine maintenance?
Yes, sir. And I've also done, just kind of my background of determining cause and origin, I've gone through and found historical imagery of when the sinkhole was first presented itself, which would have been 2019 or 2020. I've also gone through and taken photos of the property throughout this time. There's a crack going up the side of the house, right adjacent to the sinkhole. And I have photos depicting the crack widening since the sinkhole first was, first presented itself.
Okay. One other thing, just, and something aside, I don't know if you employ it, but we do need a Public Works Director in the city of Jackson and more engineers. Mr. Wright, do you know the status of our stormwater, storm drainage cleaning program? You know, where we go out, remove the dirt around the storm drains to allow the water, free flow of water, to get out of our city?
The mayor was next, I believe.
Yeah, so, so first, thank you for speaking to this issue and bringing it before us. You spoke about an emergency item. I, I'm quite curious about that, because it's very rare that we, we would issue a declaration for, of emergency.
We both are then.
Yeah, for, for, unless it's a wider, you know, declaration of emergency demonstrates a wider...
I, I agree.
I, I guess...
I'll be happy to address where we are in the process and everything.
Okay, well, let me, let me speak to the wider issue of drainage. That is why we've already, we have IMS going and meeting in communities. We have leveraged, or we are in the process of leveraging our utilization tax, which is our internet sales tax, so that we can do a comprehensive look at drainage issues across the city. A part of that plan, because these issues have not been dealt with in many, many, many years, is to get us to a place that we're dealing with the routine maintenance of these, these drainage systems. We're beyond routine maintenance right now. And essence, routine maintenance won't help us today, right? We need to get to a place that we can get back to what is routine, because we lost the routine a long time ago. And so, that's what we're trying to do. So, so I want this to be an area that is, well, I want that, the sinkhole to be addressed. But since you have stressed to us that it is a larger issue than the location that you're talking about, then what that tells us is that we have to look at the drainage issues. issues on that, in that area, area.
Throughout the neighborhood.
Throughout the area, and that's an area we can direct them to.
Like I said, there's ninety-four properties, twenty-six of those ninety-fours already have pitting throughout the yard, right above the culverts. I went and obtained the original plat drawing for the neighborhood weeks ago and, you know, marked it up. And, you know, all these culverts are in the same condition. So if this one failed, they're all seventy years old. We're at the beginning of a major issue.
And that's, that's why we.
And that's health and safety to the people who live in the houses, because the culverts run in between, between houses. This particular sinkhole is four and a half feet off the exterior wall.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I do want to hear what, what Mr. Williamson was going to share with us on the progress or where, where we are.
So the way that this was addressed was not through like an emergency declaration, but through, you know, invoking the emergency purchase procurement procedure for this one particular sinkhole. And so we've done that. Part of the delay was that we had to get two rights of entry to access this particular area and do the work. Yes, 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 neighbors, essentially. And, and there was a little back and forth about that, but that's been done, the contract signed. I believe, I, you know, I sent it to James Caldwell.
Can everybody, can everybody virtually please mute? Can everybody virtually please mute? Can you mute them? Shaniq, you. All right.
Okay. But Delta Constructors is ready to go. They've been waiting for, you know, they've just been waiting for this issue with the right of entry to be resolved and the contract to be signed. That's all done. I, I would anticipate that James Caldwell, who's the infrastructure manager, will be issuing a notice to proceed this week, and that they should be out there mobilizing to, you know, finish the work this week.
And this may be a question for you, if you don't mind me asking, but Delta Constructors, do you know somebody's in? Do you know anybody from Delta Constructors running that?
Since, since this is public comment, if, whatever question you have for.
Oh, I was wondering if somebody was in charge from Delta Constructors.
I think that'll be a good conversation to direct, directly to Attorney Williamson.
Gotcha.
But thank you so much for your public comment.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
All right. Vanessa Ferretti, Maddox Road. Stuart Tyer back there.
Hi, good morning. I've got several little issues that just have been going on for years, and I've tried contacting the city. We've got like three or four streetlights across my house and the neighbors', and we even had a date that people were supposed to come out and fix it. I've talked to many people, but it still has not been repaired. And it's on Maddox Road. Another option I've got here is.
Just, where, where on Maddox Road? By South McCraven?
No, by Plumber Circle. Plumber Circle and Portwood. It's south of eighteen.
Okay, that's, yeah, okay. All right, all right, thank you. All right.
Okay. Another problem I've got is, we had a stop sign put up right here at Plumber fifty years ago because we couldn't get out of our driveway. Now, all of a sudden, past several years, about fifty percent of the people do not stop at that stop sign at all. There have been several accidents there because some people stop and some people don't. Then I have, I've contacted the city already, and they have been out. My next-door neighbor's had a dead tree for two years at least, and I keep taking pictures of it. It keeps falling in my property. I've got twenty thousand dollars worth of damage to my, my garage that I had built about ten years ago. It has damaged my car. And then this past storm that we had, another neighbor's tree came across my fence. So I've got trees and branches everywhere, and I need assistance with some of this stuff. And then we've got, I think our next-door neighbor's dog, I know this is simple, but our next-door neighbor's dog has been getting in everybody's trash twice a week for about ten houses, and everybody's fed up with it.
The little dog? It's a little tiny dog. He gets the garbage carried up the street.
No.
My, my church is on 115 Maddox Road.
Oh, your church is on 115? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it does ours too, but go ahead.
Get yours too, okay. So, yeah, everybody's getting tired of it, and people are starting to talk that they're gonna do something. So I, I contacted the city. They tell me, no, there was no dog catcher. Then I called about a month ago. They said, yes, there is a dog catcher, and they sent somebody out. So I don't know which is correct, and what can we do?
All right.
So these are, these are all my problems.
Yeah. Yeah, I've asked that you get with Chris Gray, especially with the traffic lights, so that we can report them to Entergy again. I mean, not the traffic lights, the, the.
Streetlights.
Streetlights, so that we can get with Entergy and, and see if they can put it on their schedule to, to repair those lights. With respect to the trees, I just want to share you, share with you honesty. We owe you honesty. That's, that's not a city matter. That would be a civil matter, where you, because it's going across private property to private property, the city can't intervene in that. And so if they're causing damage to your property, or there's some issue with their dead trees, then you would have to, you know, bring a civil claim or, or try to deal with it civilly.
I tried that.
Yeah.
Somebody from the city has been out because they said they were gonna send them a letter.
Yeah. Some, I don't know what they told you. I'm giving you, I'm giving you facts right now. The city can't get involved in, in, you know, private property to private property, trees falling and, and those matters. That, that is a matter between, a civil matter between two, two landowners, okay? If it, if it were across a public right of way, if it was, if it was a tree that was on public property, then it would be, it would be a city matter. But if it's private property to private property, then it's, it's not a city matter.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we'll look, and, and when you give Chris the information, we'll talk to the police department and see if they can, they can handle the little dog.
Okay. And we need you something about the stop sign.
Now, let me say this. Yeah, well, I mean.
All the time.
We'll, we'll have to, you know, we, we, the next contract that we anticipate, next council meeting, since this was mentioned, is the augmentation of, of the engineering within Public Works. We'll have them look at what other solutions are to that. I mean, the first solution was to put a stop sign. We're ignoring it, and maybe, maybe we put, we get the police department to do some, some speed traps. We'll see what is the best.
I called and asked them to do that, and they told me to come down here.
I'm not, well, I'm not as familiar with the exact area that you're talking about as Councilman Banks.
Down Maddox Road, when you take a left off eighteen, coming down Maddox Road or going to Forest Hill, Plumber Street is almost that little windy street going down through the woods. It was like nobody stays down there. And because it's barely traffic, after you pass ten, they just shoot through it, especially young people.
Okay.
And a lot of dump, and four-wheeler racing too.
Yeah. Well, we'll talk to the chief about what, what can be done there and, and see how we can mitigate that challenge, okay?
Okay.
Councilman Stokes?
Mr. Wright.
I'm sorry?
Could we, could we get some help with, with energy? They keep saying we supposed to call in the numbers on the pole, and they'll come out in a certain period of time and fix the light.
I did that.
Well, that's what I'm telling him. I'm saying people call in, the lights are not being repaired. Can we have a conversation about maybe us holding back some of the payments on these light bills unless they get people out here?
They can hold back some of the light.
Well, they already doing that. Already doing that. I can name many streets in my world no lights. That, we need to get that fixed. They worked with Clinton when Clinton threatened a lawsuit. Maybe we need to talk about the lawsuit because this is awful. It is black dog on Highway eighty going toward Clinton in Jackson.
Okay. All right.
It is, why, why we don't have lights?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, the lights on Highway eighty, was that Robertson all the way to Clinton? There's no city lights.
Okay.
You know, how many of our streets, especially Durham, fast up without lights? Could we get some idea from them, or maybe need to be some kind of meeting where we can all get on the same page? And like this lady saying, they calling, but nobody's come and make repairs.
Okay. All right. Louis Wright, CAO, we'll, we'll have that discussion with Entergy.
Yeah, I was supposed to have an appointment with them. They said they'd be out like three weeks ago. It was like Monday, three weeks ago. They were scheduled, they said they had it on their docket to come out, and nobody fixed it.
Okay. If you'll just leave your name and address with Mr. Gray.
Okay, sure.
We'll.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ferretti. All right. Next, we'll have, and, and we'll do this all in one, and the time can be yielded. I'll let that go at the direction of Councilman Stokes. Councilman Stokes has a colleague's add, a discussion item, which is Chestain area. And the three people that are representing that discussion, and we'll go ahead and mark that discussion completed, is Billie Jean Rashad, J.C. Green, and Oliver O'Quinn on Chestain area. And Councilman Stokes, I'll let you introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Good area of the city that's slowly going down. And what they had concern, what they showed me, Benin Road, a situation where a gentleman has mental problems. And those citizens are afraid over on Benin Road. On Shepherd, these people have worked, retired, and they got puns in their backyard coming from a water source that no one knows. They had cranes, ducks, and everything else, and most of these are elderly women. And then near the apartment complex or the townhomes, there's drainage issues similar to what Councilman Harlan was speaking of. But all the people from Benin Road in that area view, some of them are here, some of them did not make it. Are y'all Benin Road, that area?
No. We are South Alabama.
South Alabama.
West Carolina.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, who you, you Benin Road? Come on down this way. Come on down this way, Benin Road. No, ma'am, not at South Alabama, Benin Road.
Oh.
Okay. Yes, sir. We'll start with you, Mr. McQueen. Mr. O'Quinn.
Okay. My name is Oliver O'Quinn Jr., and I live at 655 Benin Road in Broadmoor in Chestain area. But first problem that we have with just a lot of gunshots going off. You know, you can't go outside. A couple that came through my garage, and the next one, well, yesterday evening, I made it home about eight-thirty, and gunshots went off, about a hundred gunshots cut the door from me. And people running, going in the house, but nobody never reported. I called the police, but nine-one-one, they stayed out for a long time, they never came, and I just went back in the house. But, but have a sewer problem at 745 Benin Road. The sewer been running out of the cleanout in the street, all in the street, and two or three doors on each side since February. I've been reporting it, the water coming, everybody, this, that, and other in the city. Nobody did anything, you know, just stinking like all the glory. But, and the next thing is, at the end of Benin Road, at Dead End to Wood Mountain, the water that come from the south going north into Shepherd Road that go down to the creek, at the stop sign, that place been drained, been stopped up and just flattened with eighteen wheelers and everything since 2010. I've been trying to get them to fix it, because when the water come off the hill, the wood mount, it makes a right turn and go down Benin Road. And every time a big rain, I can't even go to my mailbox. It's just a flood, you can't see the street. And been asking Public Works to come out and do something. Nobody did anything. And next with Woodland Hills Baptist Academy, 5055 Manhattan, they just started dumping, it's just a dump site. We wish the city could do something about it. They're just coming in dumping tires, garbage, some of everything. And, and the next is potholes from Lance Road and Ames Avenue all the way to North Side Drive. Potholes everywhere, you can't hardly get out. And these potholes, some of these potholes been there since 2015. I was driving limousine, I called them about fixing it, and they fixed half of it. And every time they come out, they give you a different story. But our neighborhood, I moved there in ninety-five. It was a good neighborhood. But now, it's sad to have to say, but after all the white people moved out, they just forgot about the blacks, and it's not right.
Thank you so much. Next on Benin.
Good morning. Yes, I do stay on Benin Road. I stay right across the street from the neighbor that everybody claims that has mental illness issues. No, he does not. He's just on bad drugs. He's also had a standoff with the police not too long ago, and JPD just let them pull out a gun on him, and they did not do nothing. They left from the scene. It has been a living hell, living on Benin Road, because this man has set his house on fire. They just moved the camper just the other day. We been called, JPD, Capitol, everyone. No one does nothing at all. We called the city, still nothing done. They just moved it the other day. JPD ride past, it act like they don't see anything going on and keeps running past, which is ridiculous. Every time we call the police, he shoots his gun. Me, my mom, and my sister sitting down watching TV downstairs, a gun, a bullet come flying through our window. Still nothing done about that. Police say they gonna do somebody. Still nothing done about that. That's crazy. His house needs to be tuned down ASAP because it's ridiculous. So everybody that ride past our street, they stopping as if it's a museum or something, taking pictures. It's not, no, no. He comes, he tried to set the next door neighbor's people's house on fire as well. They have kids there as well, vandalizing their properties as well. We been calling, this has been going on almost a year. He ran off his family first, now he's just running off everybody from the neighborhood because he's continuing on with doing the same thing over and over. And I feel like JCPD just letting it slide, and I feel like that's not okay at all, because we've been pressing this issue for so long that doesn't have to be somebody getting cute to something before anything gets done, because it's ridiculous at this point. Like, we come outside to our house, he bringing down the whole community because his house looks a mess. If you ride past his house, you clearly will see all the rain spray paint, all that, you gonna see all of it at his house. Big R, big RVs, all that in the back of the house, all that, and it stinks, it smells, it's very stanky. He been burnt down the house last year, and he still is living there currently today. This is an ongoing situation that I feel needs to be handled, because we have done everything in our power, like I said, calling the city of Jackson, JPD, State Capitol, all of them, and everybody just keeps saying that they're gonna do something about it, and no one is doing nothing about it. And it's getting to a point where it's overwhelming. Like I said, we're living in pure hell. Somewhere we have been staying at, where I have grew up at as a little girl, I'm twenty-two now. My mama moved us up over there when we was, when I was five. So I feel something has to be done. Like my mama said, she rode past on the street, it's a lady in her car, JPD officer, she sleep. My mama pull over, come talk to her, she sleeping her car. But I'm just saying, I feel like something has to be done. I feel like we keep talking and talking and talking, but I feel like no one is putting in action at all. And it has to start with us. If we keep coming to everybody with our concerns, and everybody keep saying they gonna do something, they gonna do something, they gonna do something, ain't nobody doing nothing. We gonna keep on coming with the same issue until it gets handled. So I just feel we need to do better as a community, as just Jackson, period. I just feel like the city is going down, like we have to do better.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Councilman Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, I was called on Shepherd, and I was leaving Shepherd and saw Benin Road, I was just going up. And saw Benning Road, I was just going up Benning Road, and I saw this house that, that she's explaining. I got in my car and talked to her because this is unbelievable. It's not a house. When you hear the word house, you think of a house. The house been burnt down. He's in there with all kind of graffiti, written all across the house. And what make it even worse, he got a gun.
Multiple.
And a shot in they home. You know, this is not how human beings supposed to live, so I took a doctor and showed it to the doctor, the doctor said he's insane. We, we can't allow the citizens in this city to be terrorized. Their father came out and talked to him, said he work at Kroger's, and these are working people paying taxes in this city to be terrorized. They could live anywhere in this state they want to live. They want to stay in Jackson. But we need to make Jackson safe. Man, if that bullet had hit any of them, what they have been going through is unbelievable. And that's what I'm saying now, from America person, they're saying that he's insane. He might not know what he doing and these, but the city got a responsibility to these citizens to make sure they safe.
Right.
Right, Dr. Omari.
First of all, let me apologize. Uh, you deserve to be able to live in an environment where you can have dignity and where you feel safe.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Now, the city of Jackson ha, is aware of the issue with the house. I've been informed that they towed the RV on Thursday. And they've also done, done some work in terms of cleaning up the area around the house.
They just pulled one of his, one of the trucks that he had just brought from somewhere that wasn't working. They had pulled it because begging out the yard, you about to hit the truck, everything. They send right there, didn't ever work, just bring stuff over there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so code enfo, code enforcement is aware, and they're working very hard to clear, clear that situation up, but they have restraints within the law that they have to follow. But they are aware, and they're working very hard to bring you some relief in this situation.
I, I apologize that I stepped out, that wasn't an indication of the importance of what you had to share. I needed to go and speak to the young people that were here, so forgive me for stepping out.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Alright.
Uh, question, Mr. President?
Niana Green.
Say it.
Niana, Niana.
You got it?
Spell it.
E N I Y, A N A, green, like the color.
Let him finish and then.
Go ahead, Councilman Stokes. We had a chance to ride back through, I know, and I think the chief are getting the RV removed. But it's still about, what, five, six, seven cars, front, back, side?
Yes, jet skis, that, that works.
Jet skis over the front?
Yes.
You know? Did you bring a picture? I know young people take picture with their phone.
No, sir. No, sir, I ain't got no picture, no, sir, no, sir.
You ain't, you ain't got?
I got one on phones, I was about to do the picture.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, and I'm sure that Chris, uh, will get with you as well. Alright, now we have.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Dr. Bowden didn't get up. Uh, he's, he's here with Chestane area.
Yes, my name is Pastor C J Bowden to the mayor and the honorable counsel. Uh, my complaint is in the same vicinity of where they live. Mine is due to the drainage that's at Manhattan and Benning Road. All the water that runs down from North Side Drive all the way down Manhattan dumps into the ditch behind our house. I'm here representing our homeowners association, our president, Ms. Rhonda Thomas, and the homeowners association of Autumn Woods Park that's right there on Edgewood Terrace. But we seem to get all the water that comes down there. And what our request is, is that we get somebody from the city to come and clean that ditch out that's behind our property that belongs to the city. And we talked to Mr. McClinty, and hopefully we can get you all to relate this again to him. If they would clean that ditch out for us, we would maintain it once it's cleaned out. But they have trees that have grown up in it because of the neglect that has taken place over the number of years. Uh, this gentleman that he's talking about that just walked out, that water comes from Benning Street, it runs underneath, and it runs into the ditch. So you have two flows of water that comes down that's hindered by the, the growth in the ditch. So my request and all the people that live in our neighborhood is that if this council will consider that we do all we can to keep our neighborhood respectable, operable, and law-abiding. But we need your help to keep our area behind our property in a livable manner.
Yes, sir. Uh, we're, we would be responsible for that, so I want to give you my office number directly. And I'm gonna talk to Lakeisha Weathers about getting someone out to clean out that particular ditch and seeing how we can deal with the trees. I'm gonna give you the office number now, if you can, do you have something to take it down?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I don't mean to be, uh, contrary, but I talked to this lady about the cemetery out there, and I guess I talked to you also about it.
Yeah.
And she, uh.
And she has contracts that are intended to be brought up in the next week because her team is not capable of doing it. We have two contracts with two vendors. It hasn't fallen on deaf ears. I talked with her as recently as this morning about those contracts. Uh, I told her how serious I was about people doing their jobs. And as we issue these contracts, if we can't get city employees to do a good enough job, then we'll look at potentially contracting the whole force. So that's, that conversation has not died. I remember meeting you right here at the security desk. Uh, so I, I remember the conversation. I talked to a lot of people, but you'd be amazed at my ability to recall. So I remember that, that conversation, uh, and, and we've been following up on that. But my num, my number six oh one, my, the, the office number six oh one, nine six zero sixty four thirty three.
Thank you.
Pastor, I couldn't help but notice that big gold emblem with that harvesting wheat, that grand old church of God in Christ right there.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. The only church in the world.
Don't call me preacher, call them what?
The only church in the world. But I thank the council for this time to allow me to come and share my, my grievances. But I, I really feel sorry for those people that just left here. Because I hear those gunshots, but we live in a pretty safe neighborhood, I was just gated, they can't get in. But those that live behind us, they go through pure hell. And it's because, I'm not being unrealistic. It's because we are not putting people in jail and keeping them there.
Come on preacher.
Last week, this lady that's runs around naked
Say it.
Burst the windows out of our church. They let her out forty eight hours after she was arrested on Thursday. I got a call Saturday that she was on I fifty five Frontage Road with her blanket. These are the kind of things that really make this city dangerous, and it keeps businesses away because people can't pay it, businesses can't pay insurance rates when crime is so high. So it's, it's all of our jobs to make sure that where we live is peaceable, orderly, and more than anything, friends. Please solicit your prayers for us, because we pray for you all.
Yes, sir.
We know you all have a hard job trying to satisfy all the complaints and all the needs of the people. But if we keep praying for you, you keep praying for us, I believe God.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Before we leave, uh, I want to take a second about the lady that was naked that busted the windows out. Uh, I ride my ward late at night, and when I saw, um, uh, Maze and Bay Avenue, she had a big old teddy bear. So just so happened, butt naked. So just so happened, I went by, um, Bullitt's the next day. She come in Bullitt's, asked for food, I said, where your teddy bear? She said she left it at home. But the word in these neighborhoods, she's supposed to have AIDS. She went to your church, bust the windows out. And that's at North Side Drive and what's your side street, right there by Bishop? North Side and Bishop. Bust all your windows out, y'all had to re-clean up because of the blood and everything.
We're still waiting on Servco to come in. And clean up so Venable can come back and put the glasses in. And all these are things, but on the fifth of June, my cousin passed on the fourth. And I was at his house, my brother's, my, my other cousin's house. His wife came home and said, you can't believe what I just saw. She said, I just saw a lady over there on Livingston Road lying in the street, butt naked, kicking her feet up in the air. That was June the fifth. She broke in our, she busted the windows at our church, June the twenty fifth. Twenty days she had been roaming the streets. So that's one of the problems that we have. And somehow we have to keep those kinds of people incarcerated. And how do you do it? I can't, I can't make a recommendation to that. But I think there's some means by which we can go about keeping those kinds of people from harming other people. Because they're not gonna be liable for it if they do.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Clark, did you get his name? Alright, uh, next, last, we have Billie Jean Rashad and J C Green, thank you for waiting patiently, Alabama Avenue.
I want to say first of all and foremost, good morning.
Good morning.
And I have for, let me tell you a little bit about myself. I am a widow, I am sixty seven years old, and I'm a mother and grandmother. I've been in my home for forty three years. And it started with four main breaks that we had on South Alabama. I called the city numerous of times. No one came out. And we had one main break that started from, just say, coming off of Capitol on Alabama. And it started, and it ran, it ran, it ran, and I know for maybe a month. And when I called, and I, well, matter of fact, I got a nephew that worked for the water work. And but, you know, after, uh, he told me who to call, and I did that. And after I called, she said they was gonna send someone out, and they didn't at that particular time. And so we still had to wait. I ended up calling again. And, uh, finally they sent someone out, and when they came out, they didn't, I mean, they threw a little gravel there and just left it there.
You're talking about the fire hydrant, right?
Well, it's about the fire, but it started from, it started from the water, the main breaks. We had four breaks on that street. You understand?
Uh huh.
Alright, yeah, the fire hydrant, I'm gonna get to the fire hydrant.
You don't have a lot of time.
Alright, well, alright, let me go to the fire hydrant then. Alright, J X N came out, the guy came out, and he asked me, he said, ma'am, I'm gonna turn this fire hydrant on. I said, sir, please don't turn that fire hydrant on. I said, because when they turn that fire hydrant on, it's in front of my, it's in my yard, sitting in front of my yard. So he said, well, if you don't want it on, I won't turn it on. I said, no, sir, I said, because when you all do, I said, that water just run directly in my driveway. So he said, alright, I'm not gonna do it. So the next morning, he sent a younger guy out, and the guy turned it on. He left it on. And when he left it on, I mean, it ran, and it ran, and it ran. I mean, I don't, I mean, he was just dripping. And I mean, I got pictures, I got everything. So after they left it on, D seventy seventeen, at three fifteen that morning, that tree, a big old oak tree fell in my front yard and on top of my car. And the car that I had, I had saved my arm, my money. And got that car. And, uh, so, I mean, it was seven light poles that fell, that tree falling on top of that car. And I mean, that is just, that fire hydrant saturated that ground. And I mean, if you see that big oak tree, you'll see that there's nothing wrong with it. Like I said, I've been in my home forty three years.
First and foremost, I thank you for, for coming here, um, for a number of reasons. One, uh, all of the issues that you mentioned, uh, unfortunately are no longer issues that are controlled by the city of Jackson. From the main breaks to the fire hydrant being open and however long it ran, and then, uh, consequently leading to the tree, the tree's roots, uh, you know, being oversaturated and it, and it falling. Those are all Jackson Water issues. Jackson Water is not a division of the city of Jackson. They are a independent third-party management group. And the reason I actually, I, I'm grateful for you coming is because they don't actually have a venue for residents to express their grievances like this. So, you know, hopefully it, it is heard and communicated. Uh, I don't, I, I think that you would have to maybe file a claim with them in terms of what happened with your car. But they're in control of all of the water system. So the breaks, that's their responsibility to fix. Uh, you know, there is some, you know, it is, uh, routine that, that when, and I think you know this since you know the consequences of when, how it affects your driveway. But when there's a break, they, they, they bleed the lines, they, they, they go through the lines of the fire hydrant so that you don't get brown water, and you don't have all of the, you know, things that are in the air, the particles in the air that come through the, the pipes. So they, they have to do that. Now, can they construct a solution that does not come through your yard, maybe attach a hose? I'm sure that there are other ways to deal with that, I don't know precisely what that is. Uh, but I would suggest, uh, you can email us and, and we'll, you know, we'll attach it to Jackson Water, we'll advocate on your behalf. But, you know, we have limited control, limited power, limited ability to direct what they do. And so this is something that I want you to document so that residents are aware. First of all, residents aren't widely aware, aware that it's no longer the city of Jackson. Uh, I got a call from a couple of residents today that were talking about brown water, sending me whole bathtubs of brown water that they're receiving, and they're being told that there's no issue in their area when, you know, it's not even kind of brown, it's, it's as brown as that podium that you're, you're, you're standing at. So, uh, we'll send that information over, but this is not in our control anymore. So, so our effort is to advocate on your behalf, but we can't send a crew out, we don't have a crew or any of those things, but we will advocate on your behalf, okay?
Alright, Mayor.
And it's hard to believe that you're sixty seven? Yeah, uh, black woman, alright.
Alright, Mayor, if, if, if there's a way, um, because we're, we're getting a lot of these complaints. And I, I, I know citizens sometime get frustrated to hear that we had, we don't have that responsibility. I know that, that there's great frustration. If there is a way for us all to coordinate our efforts and catalog these complaints in writing, get them to the city attorney's office and send them directly to the EPA and Department of Justice, I think that, uh, that will help us, you know, uh, I, I think we all should coordinate.
So, so let me, I, I agree. I'll let you know that, that slightly a step ahead of you, I wrote the EPA in, in a, in a very lengthy letter. The EPA has, and I'm gonna go ahead and say it because I owe people truth, the EPA behind closed doors have been telling me that they have issues too. Uh, I think that we'll have to talk to our representation about getting.
In lieu of all of that, I think additionally that would help because, you know, when they said they came down here to hear directly from citizens before this third-party management, I think that, that, that now we have to also let them hear from citizens in their dissatisfaction. Hear from you, me, the councilor, anybody else is one thing. But since their burden was, oh, the citizen said this, and this would be good, then let them hear.
Yeah, their, their response to my letter was that the residents aren't complaining anymore because they're so pleased with the way things are going. That was, that was literally the response.
Yeah, that's why I think we need to.
But we'll have to wait a little bit. Uh, Ted is in, we, uh, Louis had a meeting, we're supposed to have a regular meeting, he's in Africa right now. Uh, so we have to wait on him to get back, for the next three weeks, he's in Africa, so.
Alright, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is J C Green.
Yes, sir.
And I live, uh, uh, I'm a neighborhood. And like she said, that, you know, uh, this, this water made a mess up, made the tree fall in the yard. So my main concern is I've been on Alabama, South Alabama.
Okay.
Just pull it up for.
I've been on South, South Alabama ever since nineteen seventy eight. And, uh, I've never been able to get anybody out there, and I, I can't find out who is my councilman.
Oh, Lord.
Some people tell me, uh, Stokes. And some people tell me. And some people tell me Harley. So, I don't really know who, who represents me.
This is Alabama near.
South Alabama, over West Capitol Street. So.
Okay, then.
Uh.
I'm gonna let them figure that out.
Uh, I can't be all the Harley.
Sir, I, I think, I, I think whether it's myself or Councilman Stokes, we'll, uh, we'll take care of you.
On, on east side of my street, it's free, uh, it used to be houses. They told the houses down, now it's swamps. And never, never be cut, when you turn on South Alabama, it's field on both sides of the street. And I never can get anybody out that do nothing about that, you know? Then we got burnt houses on the street, uh, that, you know, they tell me that they're gonna get them towed down, but I never hear nothing. But well, Stokes, he know me.
Thank you, sir.
I know his dad, his daddy, my, 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 and his daddy were real good friends.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm trying to find out really, who is my councilman? They said one part of the street is five, one part is three. But when we came on Alabama, Louisiana, about those potholes, our vision was to make part of, part of the zoo. Now, that's my position on it. But it's hard to get people over there to meet. They don't, they don't come to meetings, they don't participate. Now, we go as far as up there by, uh, the nightclub. And we got rid of those homeless that was in there. They had one basketball player, he played for ProVine. And I haven't heard any complaints lately about him. But he was terrorizing that area. So, it's been something. They even had operation in there where the federal government was in there. So, Mr. Green, I, I don't know what to tell you. Now, I know our office keep good records. Now, you ain't never called our office. Now, you may have called City Hall or some other people, but you ain't called Ward 3. Well, I called it all, but they told me, uh, uh, before, a long time ago, Tim was.
That was a long time ago.
Okay, but then they say Harley, whoever he is, you know? Say he was, and I talked to his secretary, and, uh, they, I've never been able to get nobody out there, nobody.
Okay, uh, sir, uh, Mr. President, if you allow, uh.
Go ahead.
Right now, I think it's, it's kind of on a border between the two wards, okay? And number one, we, we're joining at the hips, Ward 3 and Ward 5. We take care of our people over there. So, whether you call my office or his office, something needs to get done. When you called my office, did they take your concern? Did they take that? Because that's the next step. They're gonna take your concern and then report it in to the city, okay? And I, I would ask that Chris Gray, our constituent service person for the, for the city, meet with you after this to make sure he got all things taken care of. Now, a lot of those houses over in that area, uh, came under Revitalized Mississippi, a nonprofit. As you're aware, they probably sold a lot of properties, uh, and cleaned a lot of properties in that area. Uh, but again, uh, whether it's myself or Councilman Stokes, I invite you to call either one of our office. Uh, we're gonna take care of you. And if you leave your information with Chris, then I'll get it from him. And I can come personally out there to see you, uh, to make sure your needs are being taken care of. So, so we can do that. But I think one of the issues you brought up is those, the properties, burnt-down structures. You know, that neighborhood is in a big transition, as you all were, okay? A lot of things going on. There's a Shanika Epps over there on Louisiana Street, okay? She is the neighborhood coordinator, and she's doing a wonderful job to take care of that part. I don't know how far she willing to extend down, but I, I would try to get you that information for her or get your information and pass it along to her. Because she is a mover and a shaker over there for us, trying to clean up that neighborhood. We did a cleanup over there about two months ago, went in there, mowed down properties, picked up limbs, a bunch of things over there off of, uh, Louisiana. But there's a lot to do off of Capitol. There's a lot to do.
Get something did because I was thinking about moving.
No, don't move, Mr. Green.
No, please, don't.
Yeah, well, you know, because it's nothing, you know, we can't get nothing did or done.
Mr. Green, let me ask you this. Where do you vote at now?
At, uh, Jane Street, uh, at the community center.
That's what I'm saying. What they did, they, uh, they came into that area, and they sent a lot of people in that area to make Everest Boulevard to vote.
Fire station.
To that fire station.
Right.
So, people don't know where they at, they don't know what ward they in. You voted on Jane, at Jane Avenue forever. Now, you pass Kurt's Gym that's right there, going to the fire station.
Right.
And a lot of people just don't vote over there no more. They stopped participating.
Right.
Because they didn't know. So, hopefully, when they change the ward lines this time, they'll get it where they know where you at, where you're supposed to vote, and everything else. It, it won't be Doug, it won't be Mr. Tim. You won't be saying, "Where they sent me, Mr. Tim, my ward?" No, we're gonna know for sure where you at and everything else.
Yeah, but I need to talk to someone, you know, from time to time on what's going on. Because I tried to keep my property up good, you know?
Yes, sir.
In 1978, so anybody that know, I stay on South Alabama, 139. And they, they see I keep my house straight all the time.
Yes, sir.
But I don't, I need some help, you know? I need, I need to talk to the councilman and tell him what's going on. But I really wants to know who is my councilman.
Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, let me, let me say this because I want things to be clear, right? With respect to the issues that you have, with, like, that are on your street, burnt-down houses, Chris Gray would be the one to talk to. Trying to figure out who your councilperson is, you know, would, can we offer Shanika to, to coordinate a meeting? Because Chris Gray wouldn't be responding.
Louisiana is the end of, of Ward 5, I believe, but he's right there on the line, and there's a lot of things going on.
Whoa!
Okay, but, but, this, again, again.
This is your council.
Metro Center now.
This is your council.
I live with, I live with the chest thing.
We don't do the.
They put everything in Ward 3. Everything in Ward 3. So, we'll take it.
The bottom line is, let, let me say this.
I never had Jane Avenue. Jane Avenue is never voted in Ward 3.
So, let, let me say this.
Not Jane Avenue.
Ma'am, I wear, I wear a.
Go ahead, Mr. Green.
I'm 93 years old, and I wear a hearing aid. And I just, uh, on 21st last month, I had a pacemaker put in. So, I'm having a lot of problem hearing, you know, so. But, uh, I really appreciate y'all, you know, seeing after that for me because I want to stay, I want to stay in that area because I've been in the hood my whole life. I, I was raised up in Georgetown, on Martin Luther, used to be with Hill Mill Road, and, and, uh.
You sound like you, you Kenny Stokes through and through.
Oh, yeah, that's Jabo, Jabo his own.
You started Kenny Stokes and your nephew, you still Kenny Stokes, training.
But I just like to get a little help, you know, since I'm not old, I would like to stay on in, in the area, you know? Because I started to move on, but I said, "Well, it's no use to move." And I think if there was some way I can get something did, I'd rather stay on or in this area, you know?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for coming down. And I understand your frustration with the, with the ward line right there on the line. But there's two contacts, and Chris, if you have this, provide him with Andy, uh, Frame's telephone number. He's with Revitalized Mississippi, and they're the ones that doing a lot of the, uh, cleaning out the properties and tearing down properties, a lot of things in that area. Also, I have a number to Shanika Epps, who lives on the next street over. She is a coordinator, and she may want to pull your street in to, uh, to her neighborhood association.
I appreciate that.
And that would be good. But, uh, you know, look, you can call either one of our office, you know, we have the same people, and we want to be there for you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, you can always call my office, and you'll get, you'll get, uh, you'll get assistance.
Okay, thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
All right. Uh, to that note that you brought up, uh, Councilman Stokes, um, about the redistricting.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's why it's important that we get this done in a timely manner so people can be notified in a timely manner.
Let me make sure now, for Mr. Green Lee, Jane Avenue has never, I've been there 30-plus years.
That's Ward 3.
It has never been in Ward 3. Never, ever, never, never.
Uh, okay.
Now, he knew my dad.
That between y'all.
Yeah, right now, my name is Paul. But that wasn't kind where they vote.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's true. All right, that concludes our, oh, you got it, you had your hand.
Oh, no.
That concludes our discussion. Uh, consent agenda?
All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below.
So moved.
There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second.
It's removing property second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Mr. K, uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
The, um, at the work session yesterday, I asked the representative of the planning department.
All for those questions?
For the number of properties that the city has that are, that are needed for repair or empty, and how much, much is left in our budget for this fiscal year to repair those properties is, and I was hoping they would have the information for us this morning.
Mr. President, point of order. Do we need to remove this item for discussion from consent agenda?
Okay. So, I, I. Let, let me just ask this. Do you have the information you can provide to him in a memo?
I have the information for the surplus property.
All right, it, that, that. Okay. Can she just provide it, and we go in and take out the votes? Okay, if she can provide that information, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item carries unanimously.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just wanted, uh, did you have additional information concerning the, the, uh, vacant lots and other things? Yes, vacant lots for private and businesses.
I can get you that, it's gonna take a minute to run the report.
Okay, that'll be fine. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, item, item number seven.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We had a meeting in the community concerning.
Oh, 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 Mr. Stokes, point order, we gotta get it on the floor.
Well, we're trying not to get it on the floor.
It's up for adoption.
If you get it on the floor, we may to kill it.
I mean, I, I don't know.
We had a meeting.
Well, we had, we can't talk about it unless we get on the floor.
Could we hold it?
Uh, Mr. Stokes, this item was introduced, and I, you know, if it, if it failed, let it fail. But I, I, I think if you have something to express, let's get on the floor. Clark?
Order is accepting the village at Livingston Place, Phase 1, and authorizing the mayor to sign the final plaque.
So moved.
All right, it's removing property second on this item. Mr. Stokes, you have something you want to say?
Thank you. Mr. President, we had a meeting with the community over, uh, last week concerning this item. And we tried to schedule another meeting, I think for the 15th or 16th of July. That's why we were holding this item, give the citizens and them another opportunity to meet.
If I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And, and I'm not saying anything that Councilman Stokes is unaware of, but for the benefit of the public, this is a development that, um, is not new consideration, not new consideration for the residents, not new consideration for this council. Uh, this is a development that has been in the works for some time now. Um, I'm assuming for the reason for the delay. I know that there was a tragic accident, uh, during the course of, uh, construction, uh, where one of the workers lost their lives. And, and, uh, since that time, the development has been paused. Uh, just to clear up some misnomers, uh, and, and I'm trying to be careful here because I don't want to give the impression that affordable housing is some way a negative connotation. But this, these are, uh, new rooftops. This is not considered affordable housing. Uh, this is to increase, uh, new construction in our city. Um, we talk about people moving out of Jackson, uh, which is a challenge that we want to, we want to deal with. We want people to renovate homes and all those things. But one of the challenges you have, we're trying to get residents in, is that if you don't have new builds, people in Jackson are like any other people. They want new houses, they want new construction. Uh, and where we have an opportunity, where we have developers willing to invest, right? Uh, we're not talking about a historic district where there's some challenge with, you know, historic preservation and, and meeting the, the, uh, meeting the guidelines of that preservation. We're talking about new homes in the City of Jackson for residents to live in, to become a part of our tax base. Um, and, and I have a hard time seeing why we won't want to support that. Uh, I'm assuming Judge Gibbs, you're, you're here on behalf of the group, uh, Mr. President, if it's appropriate. Uh, if there are questions that need to be answered, I, I would like to ask if they would present themselves to answer on behalf of their, their group.
Mr. President? Uh, again, we asking that we hold this item. They were supposed to meet with the community, with the people in the neighborhood, and that's who need to ask the questions. The people who are gonna be directly affected by this situation. What we're trying to do, when you talk about new rooftops, is make sure we don't lose that Jackson Medical Mall.
But, but, Councilman Stokes, I just, you know, and I know that you, you mostly don't, uh, do committees. But I, I want to say, first of all, I think this was during our first term, 2020, when we took this up. Uh, the people that were in opposition of this at the time, former supervisor David Archie, um, George Jackson, and some of those that came to that zoning meeting in opposition, from my understanding, I could be wrong, but from my understanding, now support this. In the presentation previously, one of the reasons for these new rooftops, um, is for the expansion to have people who are working in the medical corridor and who will be traveling, you know, who usually travel down 49. It's actually to expand and to allow place, uh, for those people that are doing those residencies and whatever to stay, uh, and to have a thriving medical neighborhood. Yes, sir. Promise Willer. Yes, sir. And some of those others. Um, and so, you know, I've heard a lot of rumors out there about long-term rentals, you know, those type of things that all of our communities are fearful of. But from my understanding, and, and I believe the developer can speak to this, uh, because there are plans for thriving medical corridor, we want those people that work in that medical corridor to be taxpayers in Jackson. And I, I don't want to lose that opportunity to have them being taxpayers in Jackson because when we talk about where we struggle from a revenue perspective, that's why we struggle because we end up, we're having a housing crisis, and we gotta have more than just low to moderate housing all over the city. We got to, I think it would be good, right there in that area where you grew up, to have some houses just like in Woodhaven, or houses just like Brookley, where I stayed, right there where you have nurses and doctors that contribute.
Okay, now, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If you think that the doctors at the Medical Mall, University, everywhere else finna move on Livingston Road, I got a gold mine to say you in Yazzu, Mississippi.
All right, I'll take the gold mine.
You know good and well that they are not getting ready to be a house for doctors over there.
Mr. Stokes.
If, may I finish? I didn't interrupt you. If, if and when you put that many people in that area, then you're gonna slowly close the Jackson Medical Mall. Soon as one person in that Medical Mall have their car stolen, and God be forbid somebody get raped, they already moving out of the Medical Mall. We fighting every day to keep that Medical Mall open. Promise Wheeler went through holy hell to get water when we went through the water situation. They calling me on a daily basis when it rains, said, "Ken, it's raining in here." They already moving out of the Medical Mall. And once UMC pull up and move out of there, then we got the Metro Center. The ship channel for automobiles, whether they sell or not, is on Livingston Road. And when you put those people, that many in there, and one car stolen from across the street, then that's gonna be in rank of Madison County. So, we need to think for real, but those citizens over there do not want it. And they said they would give them a chance to meet with them.
Yes, sir.
And to talk. Nobody has talked to those citizens, nobody. They came to the meeting last week and asked questions, and they said they would have them to come. Now, I made one mistake. When this came before, somebody warned me, said, "Kill it now, Ken." And I didn't kill it because of Judge Gibbs. But I never make a mistake like that again, as long as I'm a councilman, never.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, first I want to say that the notion that doctors will never want to live in that community, they certainly won't if we take the defeatist attitude that, that we won't develop and that, uh, that our communities are not worthy of professionals of that type, uh, to live there. Um, and so. And so, the work has to start somewhere.
Is this coming from somebody in the gated community?
Uh, the work has to start somewhere. Uh, I, I don't know what the relevance of where I choose for my kids and, and, you know, yeah, I won't even go there. I won't go there. But the point is, they will never live there if we don't support development and new housing, you know, in those communities. And so I would like to invite y'all forward, if you could, to talk about what the development is and what it is not, since there are some questions about that.
Y'all, y'all come on and approach the, I mean, the podium. Let, let me say this, and I'm not debating. I, I just want to state a statement of fact. McDaniel Boulevard, University Boulevard, Stewart Avenue, Pittman Park area, Atlanta, was the Georgetown of Atlanta. You go there now, and my father pasted the church, Rice Memorial Presbyterian Church, right though, McDaniel. You go there now, that area is full of, due to the expansion of Clark Atlanta and the expansion of Georgia State, that area is full of now black educators that moved into what was called the hood. And it still is very historically the hood, but there are professional people that stay there, and the area has changed in a way that's beneficial, that has helped the economics and the black business community in Atlanta. There is a model, Dr. Rice, who has in that same area now, the black business hub of Atlanta, which is called Rice, is, is a model, Councilman Stokes, and I would just implore my colleagues to be more optimistic about growth happening in the city of Jackson, regardless of the crime, regardless of cars being stolen, regardless of the things that terrorize it. At some point, we have to be optimistic and try to build some city or some city of light where there's darkness. The only way you bring light to areas, you gotta put light in darkness. And so I would just employ that. Mr. Hardy, before we hear from you, Mr. Gibbs.
Good morning to the mayor and council. I'm Robert Gibbs, and I think most of you know me. I grew up in Jackson, still work in Jackson, I have a home in Jackson, and I've been involved in trying to improve our city by several development opportunities. This is a development opportunity that came before the planning committee and from, for the city council, and we put some information in front of you to show that we've gone through every step that you're supposed to go through in order to be where we are today. And as President Banks said, before we were at planning, there were people who had some questions. We answered all of those questions, and the planning department approved it and the council approved it. We then start building, start clearing the land, putting in the infrastructure. We spent about $2 million at this point. The only thing needs to be done now is the city council approve the plat and we can start constructing homes. These are not homes that people should fear about. These are market rate homes. They're gonna be valued between $200,000 and $300,000. So these are not the community that I think people are hearing that there may be crime, there may be problems from the people who going to move there. This is gonna be a community I think all of Jackson should be proud of. When, when I grew up, I went to Murray High School, and when we would leave the football games, the street that we went on was Livingston Road. Livingston Road was a beacon of activities. We had the McDonald's, we had a Popeyes where the wind is, and we had the hood manufacturing plant. But over the years, all of that has just gone away. If you go down Livingston Road now, you see nothing but dilapidated properties. And this area here was the old hood plant, that nothing has happened there in at least 40 years. So we now have a development team that want to bring 200 market rate homes to the city of Jackson, so that people will have an opportunity to buy a new house and live in the city of Jackson. And what I've passed out to you, you can see that it's gone through planning, all the engineering has been approved. We even have designs of what the houses are gonna look at, so you can see that these are not the kind of houses that I've heard rumors about. I mean, this is not gonna be an area where there are gonna be liquor stores or things that you're gonna have to worry about. This is gonna be a very improved area. And when we broke ground on this in 2021, we had a development for a hotel, we had a development for a grocery store, and that was even the opportunity to put a sports complex in that area. But now it's been three or four years later, and we're gonna try to bring those people back to the table. But what we need now is an opportunity to get a better tax base in our city. 200 homes with people paying taxes on land right now that there's nothing happening on? I think it's a great opportunity, and, and I will ask the council to please approve it because all we need is the approval of the plat, and we'll go to work to start building homes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Councilman Hardy?
Yes, Mr. Banks. Mr. President, I was gonna comment on your comment.
No, I, I know. I just, I've been waiting. Yeah, that's, that's one. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, in comment on yours, I appreciate the, the model that you brought up and why that it may be a model. There's a lot of other models out there that, that didn't work. And one thing that, in considering this, first of all, I don't believe the city council is anti-growth. I don't believe that the city council folks up here, just because we take a vote doesn't mean that we do not want this city to succeed and we do not want houses out there. That is not the case, and I, and I hate when it, we're thrown out there like that. My question is this, Mr. Gibbs, and you know I respect you.
Yes.
A lot of faith in what you do and what you do for the city. But my question is this, when it comes to public input, and, and this goes to what's also important, the only way we're gonna move forward as a city is that we get public input on everything. And I understand you went through the processes. I understand that. Okay? Just like the redistricting, the public input came up, hey, let's delay, let's do this, 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 and this. Again, public input is that crucial part that's gonna hold our city together. Okay? And so I ask, I ask this, is there a harm in meeting with this group that Councilman Stokes mentioned? Because I think once they understand it the way you understand it, then we have some common ground. But our city continues to be, to me, out of alignment at, at a desperate time when we need public support for everything we do. We need public input for everything we do because the public, in a lot of cases, don't trust what we've done. And so what I'd like is to ask you that. Is there any way you can meet with another group? Or is this thing so far along the line that you, you say, well, hey, I got everything I need and we're gonna just push this aside?
Well, Councilman Hardy, we, first of all, we will meet with whoever want to meet. I've had conversation with a number of homeowners association presidents. When Councilman Stokes invited me to the public meeting he had last week, I was there. And there was probably 50 or 60 people in the room that we talked to. So we're not shying away from public opportunities, but this has gone through all of those
I understand that.
Steps up to this point. And we have spent over $2 million to get us to this point, and every day that's a delay costs more money.
Right.
But if the council wants us to have more public meetings, I'm not going to fight that.
Right. I'm just simply trying to, first of all, express my view, and that is for our city.
Mr. President?
And, and our city to move forward, we're going to have to have input, input, input from these citizens. That's the only way. We can put up a project here and there and otherwise, and this is not necessarily your issue. This is my issue. And I'd like to understand what Mr. Stokes
Thank you.
has to say on this group and perhaps moving forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you. Mr. President, this is not the first group who said they were gonna do something at that location.
I think he made that clear.
No, we want to make it clear again. We need to make sure that these citizens, these retired teachers over there, these people who retired, who do not want 50 to 200 new phases coming over fences threatening their quiet enjoyment. They, and, and I guess I need to go through the first question. Judge Gibbs, was it your understanding we were gonna meet at a certain time next week with the neighborhood at Golden Key with you and the people who are gonna develop this project for them to answer questions from the citizens?
Look, Councilman Stokes, at the last meeting, you said you want to have more meetings, and I said if you have more meetings, I would be there, and I plan to be there.
They wanted, they wanted the developers to be there. That's who they asked for specifically. Did they not?
There was discussions about
They did after them specifically.
Yes, sir.
Why do they not want to come meet with the people?
Oh, we, no one is saying we don't want to come to the people, but this has all been before planning, before council, before, and so we're gonna re-duplicate what has already been done.
Are you the first group, the second group, or third group?
No, sir. I've been with this project since 2018. If there was a project before then, I don't know who it was.
At that same location, to your knowledge, it was another project, right?
No, sir. Not before. We got involved in 2018. If it was another one, I'm not aware of it.
Well, everybody knows on record that there was another project, and we've heard everything from the hotels that you mentioning to the grocery stores and everything else. But these citizens should have an opportunity. And it's like I told this gentleman at the last meeting, if it's so good, put it next to his home. But these citizens deserve an opportunity to talk to them. And I don't see what's wrong with holding this and giving them that opportunity. I think your office should have a date. It's either July the 16th, that they agreed that they would meet at Golden Key. Golden Key is already arranged. What's wrong with them talking to the citizens who want to ask them questions, who've been living there 34 to 50 years and longer? What's wrong with that?
If it's a meeting on the 16th, Councilman, I would be there, whether this is passed or
We're talking about the other people. You came before, Judge, you can't answer the questions they want to ask, and you tried. We thank you for that. But we need to have the people who, my understanding, are basically selling lots. That's what I understand. That's what the question they want to ask. Are y'all gonna own the homes or y'all just selling lots?
Well, we answered that question. These are gonna be homes that people are gonna purchase. I mean, we're not gonna own the lots. We're expecting to sell the lots so we can have people having homes on the lots between $200,000 and $300,000. And I have
On the railroad track.
I have the designs of the homes in the package that you have. So this is already in the works, Councilman Stokes.
We, we trust you. We trust you, Judge. But we went through this before with the Medical Mall, remember? Right there on Williamson, where the city gave them all this property?
On Prosperity? On that side?
They gave them all this property. They gonna build a house for the doctors. And all they ain't there now, some lots that they getting rid of. We, we been through this. This is, this is nothing new for us. We seen it.
I wouldn't have
But the only thing these citizens are asking is for them to come and meet with them. What's wrong with that? What's wrong with that?
I don't buy it coming.
Let, let me say this, and so, you know, I, I hear what everybody's saying, but at some point, colleagues, and here are the facts. October of 2020, there are public hearings with the planning committee first. The public comes, they did. David Archie, all of them were there, they packed that room out. That was in 2020, and went through this process. After it went through the process and it was approved by planning board members, that each and every one of us that were in here, that were here last term, appointed, it came before this committee. It came before this committee, they packed this room out. We held it then, in 2020. I remember talking to you, I held it because of you. Then it came back, the next zoning meeting, regular zoning meeting, and we finally approved it. Now somewhere, it got held up. I don't know where it got held up. Public Works, whatever, it got held up. It has been four years. Four years. They had public hearings, it was two before the planning and two before this body, public hearings that we have to have by law. And if, in our zoning meetings, colleagues, you know that we give opportunity for the public to speak on both sides, especially those that come and come. We did that. So it's been four meetings on record.
Not one in the neighborhood.
Hold, hold on.
Not one.
I'm talking about
In that neighborhood.
I'm talking about on record, Mr. Stokes.
That's on record.
The council speaks through its minutes. Now, we did have, you did just have one in your neighborhood.
And he did not come. Developer did not come.
If he represent the developer
Oh, no, no. They want to hear from the developer. He can come to City Hall, while he can't come to the people.
Mr. Banks, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
Just for the record, my name is Sam Kelly. I'm with the Brunetti Law Firm that's right here in downtown Jackson, and I represent the developer. So, no, I didn't come to the meeting because Judge Gibbs came to the meeting. We working very closely with him, and he told me he was coming to the meeting, would answer any questions, and will be happy to answer any questions there are. But we've been trying to get this final plat approved since February of this year, working very closely with the city's attorney's office. They've been very helpful.
February this year, we here in 2020.
No, 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 no. That's the final plat when it first came before since 2020.
What's wrong with coming to the neighborhood and talking to the people? That's all we saying. That's all we requesting.
There's nothing wrong coming to the neighborhood and talking to people. We'd be happy to do that, but we don't want to hold up the final plat.
Well, period in there. We'll be glad to come. We gonna come, 'cause we already got the location identified and the time. That's why we thought, and that's why they didn't come, that it was agreed that we'll hold this item till the meeting. We were gonna do it next week. Judge Gibbs said he got to be in Destin. So we said we accommodate you, we'll do it the next week. And now all of a sudden, we come, we gonna go rush it down, without the people having a chance? How do you treat people like that?
We're not, Mr. Mr. Stokes, let me say this, 'cause, and I'm not, well, I'm the president. When this came up for introduction, I said that I will hold it and let it go through its regular routine so that you can have your meeting before the adoption. You, you did, but then to Hold on, hold on. But then to be, to me, disingenuous and say that, well, hold on, I know it's coming up on the agenda again, we gonna just keep pushing it back. It seem like we just pushing the can down the road on these developers that want to do something to the city since 2020. It is 2024.
Can I, let, let me, just to echo the sentiments of what Councilman Banks said, not only was there a recent apparent community meeting that there were efforts made to be there to represent what is taking place here. Back in 2020, there were discussions about, so it's nothing being rushed, right? And Councilman Banks, what fell through, I'm believing this tragic accident is what took place, that, that was the delay of, of this development. We believe in, in, in your recitation of other developers that have said they were gonna do something on the property, but this development team can't speak for other developers. What a difference, a difference in this matter is that they have $2 million in the ground already. They have skin in the game. They've already invested in this, right? So the fact that they've already put $2 million in infrastructure in the ground lets you know how serious that they are, and they're past the point of just a discussion about what they're going to do. 200 rooftops, market value rooftops in the community, right? Market rate rooftops within the community is something that we simply would be derelict in our duties if we looked the other way. As much as we talk about people leaving Jackson, as much as we talk about needing a tax base, 200 new homeowners. We're living in a city where the majority of the people, the residents in our city are renters. We found that out once we started doing a rental registry. And now we're trying to create more homeowners. Many of the things that y'all complain about in the community, when people are talking about how people are holding up properties or they're not caring for the properties that they're in, part of that is because they don't own anything, right? They don't have the value of what ownership is, right? That's not being re, that, that's not being, you know, that's not being spoken about, and the importance of that is not, not being a part of the culture of our city. And so we need new homeowners in our city. And so to suggest that in any way this is a harm to the Medical Mall, which, if we go back on the vote and who supported the Medical Mall at that time is an interesting question, right? But if we talk about the Medical Mall, this is nothing but an aid to the Medical Mall, right? People like convenience. I tell people all the time, Jackson is not a city that has a problem producing wealth. It's a city that has a problem maintaining wealth, and all of the money that we make And all of the money that we make between nine and five just happens to be out by six. And until we put people who live here, who buy groceries here, who buy gas here, who pay taxes here, then we will continue to have a problem with how we take care of roads, how we take care of pipes, because you don't have people who can give to the tax base. And right now, we're sitting here with an opportunity to bring people to provide to the tax base for $200,000 and $300,000 homes, right? Right? And if you want to talk about my neighborhood, that's about the value of my home, right? If you want to talk about that, right? That's what we're talking about doing. And so we're talking about supporting investment in your community. Investment in your community that we always hear, you ain't doing nothing for poor folks, right? You ain't investing where poor folks are, right? Here comes the opportunity where we're investing where the people are, and we're looking at it like a gift, looking a gift horse in the mouth, right? That's what's happening.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it's, all this sound good, it's pretty tall, but the man not finna move on Livingston Road, even though he's saying the better house are the same. Judge Gibbs not going to move back into Vernon addition. And those doctors, and I have a son that's a doctor and friends, they not finna move on Livingston Road. But it's going to be, some people going to move on there. And they're going to look at the Medical Mall as eye candy. They're going to look at those cars across the street from this location as eye candy. They're going to go cross this, still those cars. Then they're going to move those cars out of Jackson to Madison Rankin County.
Come on, Deacon Stokes.
Something going to happen over there at the mall. And once it happened at that mall, at that point, they're going to leave. Only thing the people asking is for you to meet with them and talk. And I don't think that's too much. Finally, when you talk about the abandoned men on Livingston Road and the buildings, how bad they look, they're owned by the Medical Mall. That's who owned those buildings. And if they had the money to do other things, they would have done it. We tried to get as much as we could to that Medical Mall, to stabilize that area. That Medical Mall is the stable point for War III. And we're going to fight to preserve it. And we understand those people want to move to Madison Rankin, who saying they afraid of crime. We hear them. We hear them loudly. And we understand that if that Medical Mall die, a whole lot of Jackson going to die with it. I'm saying let's hold this item and let them meet with the citizens. Thank you.
I hear you. Councilwoman Lindsay and then Councilman Harley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I barely know where to start. This has, I've been listening to this conversation, and it's been a circle for some time now, and I'm not sure we're any close to a resolution, well, a compromise maybe is the better word. And Mr. Stokes had asked me, as the meeting was starting, if I would support delaying getting this on the agenda to hold it. And I said that yes, I would certainly be willing to consider that. But here's where I think we are. It's on the floor, Mr. Stokes. And we now have, in my opinion, I think we have a decision to make about whether or not we are going to support a new development, which was once on a blighted piece of an old industrial site. I supported the rezoning of this property because I've read the book, The Color of Law, and I am very opposed to residential properties being up next to industrial zoning. I think there are bad things that can go into industrial zoning areas. I think bad things did go into industrial zoning, and there was a time when people of color only had the choice to live up next to an industrial site. And so the fact that we now have an opportunity to, A, we've gotten rid of the industrial zoning, and two, we now have the opportunity for a viable infield, new construction neighborhood to come into that site. Mr. Stokes, I'm sorry, but I tend to think that that is a good thing. And I am not sure that I fully comprehend the worry about that. I believe we are at a place in our city's history where we need to give this a try. And I do respect you, Mr. Stokes. I respect your concerns, but I think we have to, I think it's time for us to try something different.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. And Mr. Stokes, I'm trying to, I'm listening to the conversation, and I see that you have specific needs your people want answers to, okay? And I'm assuming we have two lawyers here, okay? So they've heard from the lawyers, and from what I'm hearing, they want to hear from the rank and file folks.
Absolutely.
Okay? I mean, lawyers, I understand, and no disrespect to lawyers, but lawyers tend to come at a certain way and with certain answers and certain polish. And sometimes that can even come across as a little distasteful in some instances, okay? Everyone knows you, respect you. But what I'm hearing is that we want, these folks are asking for something along the line of technical people they can ask specific questions from.
Clear and simple. Clear and simple.
And so far, they don't have it. And my, one of the things I'm wondering, you know, the goodwill, if you decide to have that person there, the goodwill that you would have a community behind your efforts cannot be underestimated. Again, I'm all for, you know, I think now we're at a time in the city of Jackson where people and their input is going to become stronger, like it was this morning during public hearing. It's going to become more vocal because they feel as though they haven't been heard from. And so I'm just looking for some kind of something here that's going to, you know, just make a difference. And I understand you guys' position, okay? You have a lot at stake here, and you want something done right here, right now. But what I don't understand is, or I don't appreciate is we turning this into us against them, and, Council, just because you don't, you're entertaining this, you're anti-business, and so forth and so on. That's, you know, that's not true. I don't feel, I don't feel that way about anyone on this council. I think we all have the same objective. So I ask, is there anything that your side can do?
Councilman Harley, whether this council vote for the plat today or vote for it down the road, we're going to be there whenever Councilman Stokes asks us to come to address the citizens. If we have a day scheduled for July 16th, and this council has approved this plat, I'm coming to the meeting. I will bring developers. I'll bring the maps. I'll answer any questions that they have. But as Attorney Sam Kelly just said, we've been trying to move this since February, and now we are in July, and every day costs money. Every day costs us an opportunity to bring something else to that development. But obviously, whatever the council does, we're going to work with you, because we've been working on this project since 2018, and it shouldn't take that long to bring something good to a city. It shouldn't take that long.
And I appreciate you working. I appreciate you going through the right steps. Appreciate you going through zoning. Somehow, somebody missed the fact that these people wanted to hear from another side.
That's not true. My phone has been ringing off the hook ever since the groundbreaking.
Right. I'm just saying, on the construction side, not the lawyer's side, but the construction side, somehow, something has been missed in the conversation.
Go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not trying to change anyone's vote on how they're going to vote on any item. But it's important that these citizens have rights, and their rights are respected. They have paid taxes. They have lived in that community for decades. Lot of those ladies have lost their husbands. And it's just not right that, Ms. Cai, is the meeting that set for the 16th of July, the 16th of July at Golden Key? Now, we're not asking anyone not to vote or vote a certain way. Only thing we're saying, let the citizens have the meeting on the 16th of July at Golden Key. Let them hear from the developers. Then it'll come back on the agenda.
Yeah.
Vote up or down, but not to allow citizens an opportunity to be heard in the United States of America, got to be considered communism.
Mr. Stokes. Councilman Stokes.
They don't want nothing but to be heard.
No, 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 Councilman Stokes. So, no, I hear you. I hear your request. We have to make sure that we don't send a message to future developers that we going to yank them around for five years.
It's not the same developers.
No, 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 listen, please. For five years, they can have, because you knew about this development when I knew about it. From 2020, no, the same ones. From 2020, the paperwork is right here in front of you. From 2020, when the application was submitted, from 2020 up until now, you could have had more than 15 community meetings. If I hear about something, I don't wait till it come before this body at the last minute to try to call and meet with my community. I'm proactive. And so to sit up here and suggest that this is communist or communism because these folk developers have gone through every process we asked them to go. When it came to zoning, I asked them to hold it. They've had more than four meetings, public hearings on record, and then you had one. And the last meeting, when it was up for introduction, I said that we're going to roll this over for adoption to give you time, two weeks, to do a meeting. How do, how can anyone that wants to do any business in this city say, how do I know that I'm just not going to keep spending money over and over again?
Mr. President, I don't mind you debating from the chair. I don't mind it, but give me a chance to respond. You can debate from the chair, even though you're not supposed to.
All right, so if that is a point that I'm debating for a chair, I call for the vote.
Well, let me respond. You can debate from the chair.
Here, here, Griselle. Let's go. Go ahead, respond.
Mr. President, it's been several developers on that property, and those neighbors have heard it.
I believe you are badly mistaken with that, Mr. Stokes.
Well, you can believe what you want, but...
No, because you're talking about the property that fairly in there we're doing.
The planning department is here. They can look it up. Everybody had to go through planning's of record.
This has been since 2020.
It's on record.
It's right here in front of you, 2020.
And the first ones that came here developing, they were connives, and the people knew it.
2020 is right here before you.
The preacher at St. Peter stood against it. Not a single house in that area has supported this. How in the world are you going to tell me this good for that community when the preachers don't want it and the citizens don't want it?
I'm not saying this...
They have not even come to the neighborhood to even talk to the citizens. They don't respect the citizens enough to come and talk to them.
I'm not saying that.
But you up here trying to sell me that this is good for my people?
Mr. President, I, Mr., Mr., I'm calling for the vote.
I ain't telling you what's good for your people. Don't tell me what's good for my people when they telling me they don't want it.
Mr. Stokes.
Now, if this a sweetheart deal, go ahead. But I thought this city had enough of these sweetheart deals.
Mr. Stokes.
Councilwoman Lindsay has called a question.
Thank you.
Just going to go ahead and call for the vote, please. All in favor? All opposed?
Councilwoman Lee.
Councilwoman Lee is not for the item carries. Councilwoman Lee, are you there?
Abstain.
Abstain, all right. Item carries for two, one abstention. All right, next item.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi requiring security personnel at businesses associated with violence during hours of operation.
So moved. Second.
This is going to move a property similar to this item, this is up for adoption. Any questions or comments?
Questions or comments? Yes, sir. Councilman Foot?
I would be interested in what the city attorney has to say about this, whether this is legal, whether we can do this legally.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. I've advised the council on a couple of occasions now that, while I think this is a well-intentioned ordinance, that I do not believe that it is enforceable. I don't believe that the law would allow the city to require the businesses to hire security personnel. And I also think the definition of a business associated with violence during hours of operation is going to be too ambiguous to enforce.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important that we send the message in this city that we are against crime. Now, if this legal department think they can't defend that, then I understand that. But we'll get somebody who can. But people sick and tired of all these robberies and killings and stealings. The young man who grandson was killed at this, at North Side Drive at the store, that this took place, that created this, this idea, they're still suffering and hurting. But it's easy when it's not your blood that's dying. If somebody want to challenge him, that's the United States of America. You can charge any law you want. And if legal department feel they can't defend it, then get outside counsel. But don't tell these citizens you got to keep dying in this city, and ain't nobody going to do nothing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Harley?
Yes, Attorney Martin. And I agree with my colleague, Hoardley. We have a lot of issues in our wards, folks dying, and there's one lady that comes to my mind right now. Her son was killed at a service station. I think he was like 13 years old. She, and they never found the killer. So this is, this is an issue now. And I'm not saying that you need to change your legal opinion. What I'm saying is this needs to rise to another level of that we're interested and we're working to resolve these issues. You know, I know we have the camera ordinance out there. And again, I think as mentioned last time, we need to make sure that these folks understand that we take this seriously. I get calls all the time. I get reminders, there are people, women, that are walking around aimlessly because their kid has been killed at one of these stations, and they don't know whether they are looking at the killer when they go in the grocery store or not. They're grieving. So I ask you, is there anything that, in here, that we can use, that we can move forward with?
That's a broader question that I think I can answer pointedly right this moment. I think what I would say is this, I don't think anyone questions that crime in the city is an issue that needs to be resolved. I don't think anybody would question the pain caused to the families and the loved ones. But in terms of how to enforce, pass and enforce city ordinances, this ordinance or one almost identical to it has been passed by this body on a number of occasions. On each occasion, it's been rejected by either the courts or by the council itself on a later date. We can look at court decisions around the country and see that this ordinance would not withstand a constitutional challenge. If the question is, are there things that the legislative body can do to help fight crime? The answer is yes, but I think that's a larger conversation that can't be completed in a council meeting.
Okay, what, just one follow-up. Priority-wise, I think last time at the meeting, I asked you to elevate these to a level of priorities. Have this, these type problems been elevated in your department?
The blue light ordinance in particular is one we work on daily, and it is my great hope and intention to have it before... The blue light ordinance in particular is one we work on daily, um, and it is my great hope and intention to have it before this council, either at the next, uh, committee meeting that addresses that or at the next regular council meeting. Um, what, what I will say is this, we're an office of finite resources. Uh, last week, three of our lit, litigators were defending the city from a $1.6 million lawsuit, and we were successful. Um, we are do, we are prioritizing public safety every opportunity we can while also balancing all of the work of the office.
Mayor?
I think Councilman.
I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Foot. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. My, my question is the terminology in, in the order, it says businesses associated with violence. Those are the people who have to require, who this ordinance will require security personnel. The question I've got is, you know, sort of the mechanics of, of, um, associated means, would leave some people think that, that they're involved in the violence. And, um, the, when, they probably are victims of the violence more than associated. So I, I think there's a, be a real problem to figure out, you know, that we'd have to come up with people who would go out and classify who is the, who are the businesses? You know, I mean, and then you, you may actually kill the businesses. I mean, the businesses may go out of business because, oh, they're, you know, associate, you know, they're associated with violence, or they've had a crime rate around their business that, that qualifies them for this requirement. And they may, you know, people stay away from those businesses for the very reason that we're trying, we're trying to help. We might be actually damaging the business prospects of those businesses. So I think it's, it's problematic and, and, uh, I, I understand what the goal is, and I, I, I think everybody agrees to the goal.
Absolutely.
Uh, but I think the, the language here may be self-destructive in itself in, in undermining the businesses that are out there that are trying to scratch out a living and, and serve the people.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Hold on a second. Uh, no, no.
No, you can, you go ahead.
You go ahead.
Mr. President, um, on many occu, uh, on many occasions, we asked the legal department to help, and they cannot, have not found time to help. But then once we get the items to the agenda and, then they can find a reason and start playing with words. If the councilman wanted to remove associated, he could have easily made an amendment where violence has occurred. That's what we basically saying. Councilman has amended things before, legal could have done the same thing. But let me get it as clear as possible. This killing didn't happen in War Three. It happened in War Four. But as long as these people die, I'm gonna keep bringing legislation to let these people in this city know we're gonna fight against this crime and, and you having these funerals, as they call it in my, in my neighborhood, sad music and slow walking. Sad music and slow walking. They sick of it, I'm sick of it, and now we want to play with words. We want to say, maybe we shouldn't have used this word, associated. Hell, I don't care what you use. Let's just make these people safe in this city. And if the legal department could not have given you another word, then maybe like I've been saying, we need a firm to represent this city, and let's move away from this legal department. Thank you.
All right, so Councilman Stokes, was that an amendment offer for businesses where multiple violent crimes have occurred?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Can, can I?
Second, is there a, is there a second?
Second.
All right, so it, it, this is, hold on before you go. This has just been amended in the title where it says personnel at businesses associated. Instead, it said businesses where multiple violent crimes have occurred.
So, so the next, uh, the next question's gonna be over what period of time, what qualifies as a crime of violence? That's what I, I wanted to, I think, I think my question was leading into, to that statement, right?
We moving along.
Sure. So first, I, you know, I was gonna go into that, but I feel compelled to, you know, say something on behalf of the city attorney's office. I mean, uh, city attorney's office has, just in recent weeks, uh, defended multiple big litigation cases, uh, against, uh, the city and, and prevailed, and they continue to do that. So our city attorney's office has been rocking and rolling, and that is no, um, overstatement. But to your point, Councilman Stokes, uh, Chief Wade, uh, and our planning department have been trying to compile a list of businesses that have had, um, a high frequency of 911 calls.
Okay, so open the tone. We're, we're packing up now.
You're, you're on, you're, you're off mute.
New Councilwoman Lee.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Council, I mean, um, Chief Wade and the planning department have been trying to, they have compiled a list of a lot of, especially gas stations, uh, and businesses where we've received a number of 911 calls. We tried to have a meeting with them. We're looking at enacting our public nuisance, uh, laws as a vehicle to, to address the issues with them. I, I like Councilman Foot stated. I agree with the spirit of what you're trying to do. My question to you, and we talked about this in work session, would it be a suitable vehicle for what you're trying to do if the cam, that this, this requirement or the security requirement was associated with our nuisance statute, which is an escalating scale? Would that be sufficient in what you're trying to do?
Well, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, the nuisance, uh, the issue of nuisance, what the city did with, uh, when Peter Taperson was attorney. And in some cases, it worked. We don't mind. But my position is, is this. Why do we continue and watch people die in this city? And only when we bring up legislation trying to stop these killings, do we get a response from the legal department or you? Why the legal department will not help draft these orders or ordinances? Why don't they give us an attorney to work with the clerk's office? Then we wouldn't have to worry about, well, we don't like how this sound, we don't like this word. We have seen them draft ordinances before where they modify what the council has given. Our position is a simple position. Let's do everything we can to stop this killing in this city, all these shootings. You know, I don't have a problem. I, I, I'm used to it in my war, and we gonna keep fighting. But hell, they was on Ridgewood Road till the day. Shot it up. Shot it up. It reminds me of the mass shooting we had at Mary Jones Center when I told this body it's gonna spread. A mass shooting in Jackson, Mississippi at Easter?
Councilman Banks, I'd like to address directly what.
Go, let, let, let me do this. Let, let me.
I mean, it was a direct.
No, no, I get it, but I wanna clarify that we do have an amendment on the floor. Go ahead and address that.
Yeah.
And then I, I'm gonna clarify the amendment we have on the floor and get, was, was your question toward the amendment?
No.
Okay, well, we can vote on the amendment and then take your question up? Councilwoman Lindsay? All right, go ahead.
So to begin, it, it would be an improper assumption to say that there's only an interest once legislation is brought up. First of all, this meeting that I had with the frequent flyers, if you will, that have had a number of calls, uh, was more than eight months ago, uh, maybe, and, and we had been having conversations before that. When Jordan Hillman was here, I talked about the coordination of the fire department, the police department, uh, and the planning department on the hotels. That's why you've seen such escalation on the hotels that, that we've complained about and the things that we've seen. So this is something that is, that is, uh, extremely important to me, and I see what you see. What we're trying to do right now is offer potential solutions. If you, you either agree with it or you don't agree with it, uh, I don't think that you have a legal department that is unwilling. I think you have a legal department, like all of our departments, that is overburdened, uh, that has a number of things that they have to accomplish. But in no regard are they unwilling to do this. I'm, I'm, I support the spirit of what you do. You and I, I think it is public knowledge that we don't always agree, right? Uh, I support the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish. The question is, how do we get to the destination? And I don't think anybody sitting at this desk or in the audience with our legal department is disagreeing with that. We just need to figure out how we get to that destination.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Banks?
Go ahead.
I would just like to make a suggestion to Mr. Stokes because I, you know, of course, want to vote for this and be supportive and be tough on crime. But I think that we need to let the legal department, uh, look this over and give it some quantifiable, measurable, um, details so that we can make this something that can pass and, and be enforceable.
Go ahead. Yeah, let, let, let me deal with this amendment.
Okay.
Cause, cause we're, we're talking about the spirit of the whole thing, but let me deal with this amendment. And, and, and let, let me make this amendment. Um, in the spirit of, of this, and I think that this would help us out. Uh, in, in the title, it says Orders of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, require security personnel. It would say the amendment would be at businesses where multiple crimes, in parentheses, number five, meaning the definition of multiple crimes will be five, have occurred within a period of 90 days. That's in the heading.
But what are, what are the crimes?
I think you need to reduce that number.
Oh, we need to reduce it down?
If 90 days, three.
Three days, five? Do we need to say 30 days? I mean, tell me, I'm just.
No, what I'm saying is five crimes within 90 days.
That's a lot.
Is a lot. I'm saying three crimes, two to three crimes within 90 days is too many within a 90-day period.
Right. So give me a suggestion on the time limit. Two to three days?
Two to three crimes.
Two to three crimes within a?
Which is two or three. You gotta pick one number.
Pick, pick a minimum.
Mr. President?
A suggestion on this, right?
Yes, a suggestion on this.
You want more? Go ahead.
I, I've had my, uh, what I want to say is, is really now related to what we're doing before we, it's, it's related to the amendment.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Banks, is it too late to put this in committee? Because we do not have time to sit here and dissect this line by line today and, and put this in the public safety committee and let legal work with it.
Yeah, I, it, and.
That, that, that was my suggestion. I second that.
All right. I, I, what, what I am trying to do, and again, uh, and I've said to somebody this morning, this is like herding cats sometime, but Councilmen Stokes have placed this on the agenda, and there has been a request for legal to help bring suggestions, and it's rolled over to the time of adoption. So I'm trying to help get it to a place where it's healthy enough to be passed, where there's a good legal grounding, uh, to be fair, because I don't want council members to feel like if something goes off for introduction. And I know you're busy. I'm not trying to slight or, or any other, but I'm just trying to get it to a place.
Can I say one thing on that issue? So, so in terms of any of the ordinances, especially with regard to public safety, uh, our office is open. Uh, we'd love to sit down with any council member at any time who wants to come in and say, this is what I'm trying to accomplish. Can you help me draft an ordinance for it? We've been doing that with Councilwoman Lee. We've done it with Councilman Hartley. We've done it with JPD. We'll do it with anyone who comes in. The first time that I saw this particular ordinance was when it went on the agenda. So I, I'd be happy to do it with Councilman Stokes. I want to do it with Councilman Stokes. I think there is a way to address the issues he's trying to address and do it in a legal way that we can defend and have confidence that our police force can enforce it.
Mr. President? Go ahead, Mr. Stokes.
Mr. President, I've been doing this a long time. I done lost some votes and I done won some votes. We don't have to put this in committee, let it die. If legal want to do something with this ordinance that's to help stop these killings, they would have had a companion ordinance.
Right.
Which they do not have. So that ain't number fluff that you tell the new and green people. We can vote, Mr. President. I'm ready. If it die, it die. But we'll keep fighting. But we're not gonna sit there and just let it go in committee and die, come back so weak and water down.
Yeah, I had a suggestion, uh, 10 minutes ago, but.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Fluff. My thing is, is to, uh, uh, Mr. Martin, first of all, we didn't really work together. I mean, I'd sent you information and it, it didn't, I didn't get any responses back.
Initially, that's correct.
Right. I didn't get any responses back. Secondly, this. Uh, just like we went through this past thing with this ordinance and its development, lawyers seem to think things a different way than some of our public do, okay? Mr. Stokes is sitting on top of murders. I am sitting on top of murders. We think a little bit differently. So what I'm asking you is to think outside of the box and don't, don't necessarily just think, oh, well, lawyer, 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 this and that. I think that's the problem we had with our last discussion is the people weren't talking, the lawyers were doing all the speaking, and the people didn't want to listen to the lawyer speak. And I think with this issue, I want to see people, I want to see outside of the box. I want you to take every comment that the council is making and see, how can we make it work? If not, I'm, I'm along that same line. Let's just howl outside, uh, a firm that can do that. But I think just to lawyer these things up is disingenuous to the people that we serve. That's the, that's the problem. And I understand you have a job. I understand you have a responsibility. I understand. But you also got guidelines, and the guidelines is not doing, it's not getting stuff done.
Mr. President, I think we have an amendment on the floor, and I think Councilman Stokes has called a question to the amendment.
Not to the amendment, we ready voted on the, on the item itself.
We have to dispose of the amendment first. I think you got a first, a first and a second.
So, so the amendment was where multiple, three violent crimes have occurred within a period of 90 days. Is that motion second still? Was it you motion? And, and Griselle second? Okay, all right, that's.
20 days because that's more strict. Once a 90-day period lapses, then it recycles, right? And then the. If you have a wider.
So, but we'll just stick with the 90 days, and, and this will be a live document if we need to come back in a minute, okay? All in favor of the amendment? All right, the item is on, all right, the item is on the floor as amendment, and, and let it reflect that language throughout the document, all right? Uh, all right, now we had the item on the floor as amendment. Any question or comment? Yes?
Yes, I, 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 I shudder to think that we need, we, we need, uh, input by the police department, and we should get, uh, we should get information from them on how to proceed and how to make things a little bit more, because again, they are involved in these issues as well. And I, 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 I really, I, I really think that, you know, to have lawyers and council folks, and especially folks that aren't involved in people actually being killed at their places to make these decisions, we may not be making the right decision. So I would, I would love to have some kind of input if, if there's anyone here from JPD.
I don't think they're here right now for sake of time. Are you saying, are you suggesting, seems like you're suggesting that this goes in Golden Committee?
I'm just suggesting that, I'm just, no.
You're not suggesting Golden Committee?
No. I'm just suggesting if there's anyone from JPD, either, uh, uh, video or in person, that they could speak to this before we just go ahead and throw something together.
JPD wasn't prepared for, to come on this item, so they're not, they're not present.
All right, the question, the question has been called. Uh, all in favor?
Bye.
All right, opposed? Abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
All right, item carries for five, one, one. Item carries five, one, one. All right, thank you. All right, next item, yes. Item number nine.
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi, Providing for the Election of Council President and Vice President.
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved in property second. Uh, on this, colleagues, as I get ready to open the floor uh, for slate of nominations for, uh, president and vice president, I just want to say it's been a pleasure to serve. Uh, there has been people that have asked about serving again, but I have missed my Little League's football practice every Monday just about, uh, due to work sessions and other meetings and stuff, and I really want to get back to my second hobby, which is, uh, the South Jackson Bar Bingles. And so I want to thank you for the opportunity. Uh, and I just want to take a little privilege, um, because I, when I, when I came in, one of the things that was very important was seeing, uh, people that were in their first term have the opportunity to lead. And, um, I, I want to put forth a slate of president and vice president, one. One, uh, Angelique Lee has served as vice president for the past three terms, and I think that she deserves a chance. And, you know, usually the person that's always offering humility and shying away from leadership, oftentimes if I try to hand this over to Mr. Griselle, he hands it back and say, what are you doing? And so I nominate and put forth Angelique Lee and as president, Brian Griselle as vice president.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, President Banks. You have been a great president, and it's been a true honor to work with you. I do want to decline the opportunity to serve as president. Uh, I too have, uh, as a single mom, I want to make sure I'm present for my girl, so I'm going to decline the opportunity. And if I could, I'd like to make a motion for the slate to be President Virgie Lindsay and Vice President Brian Griselle.
All right, and, and we don't have to make a motion for a slate. Every, any member can introduce a member, uh, to, to go on slate, that doesn't have to be motioned second. So now you have for president, uh, Virgie Lindsay and, uh, added to that slate is Vice President Brian Griselle. Is there anyone, uh, let me just go back to president. Is there any additional nominations for the office of president? Yes, Councilman, uh, Hartley?
Yes, I'd, I'd like for, uh, uh, Councilman Ashley Foot, uh, as president.
All right, Councilman Ashley Foot. All right, are there any other nominations for president?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Councilman Hartley as the vice president.
All right, as the vice president?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. So we'll, we'll start with the office of president. Uh, are there any other, uh, nomination for the office of president? Is there a motion to close the nomination, close the floor, I mean, close the slate nomination for president?
So move.
Second.
All right, the, uh, nomination for president has been set forth and is closed. It is, uh, Councilwoman Virgie Lindsay and Councilmember Foot. I will start with the vote for president since that has been closed. All in favor of Councilwoman Lindsay?
Aye.
All in favor of Councilman Foot?
Abstaining, Mr. President.
All right, uh, by majority, Councilwoman Lindsay is council president. Uh, Councilwoman Lindsay, give her a hand. Is there a motion to, we have, uh, for slate, uh, for vice president, Councilman Hartley and Councilman Griselle. Is there another addition, uh, to nomination for vice president, or is there a motion to close?
I move that nominations for vice president be closed at this time.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second, that nomination for vice president be closed. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we have for, uh, that, uh, nomination that have been nominated is Councilman Griselle and, uh, Councilman Hartley. All in favor of Councilman Griselle?
Aye.
All in favor of Councilman Hartley? All right, uh, Councilman Griselle has been elected vice president. Ladies and gentlemen, would you give him a hand? Again, it has been a pleasure serving, and I now hand this gavel over to Council President Lindsay.
Congratulations.
Back in the hood.
Yeah, back in the hood.
Thank you, colleagues. I am honored to have this opportunity for a, a third time. And, um, Mr. Mr., um, Mr. Former President, Mr. Banks, before we continue, I just want to pause and say thank you very much for your leadership this year. You have faced some really difficult challenges, and you have always handled them with grace and yet firmness, and, um, we appreciate your leadership this year. And also, I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Lee, who has served for three years as the vice president, and we are very grateful for her, um, always being there to help, um, make sure that everything was running smoothly with the council. And so with that, um, colleagues, any, any other comments at this time? We are going to go in ahead and move forward with the agenda.
Ms. Lindsay.
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to add, uh, I want to also congratulate, uh, Councilman Banks for the success he's had working at the state and, uh, national level-
Oh, thank you.
-the, the different groups.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just a, a moment of personal courtesy. I'd like to, uh, uh, thank the members of the Mississippi Black Caucus of Local Electoral Officials. Uh, I have been, uh, elevated to the position, position of president of that organization on a statewide basis, and I look forward to the lessons and the things that we learn that we do as the largest city in the state. We need to help out the other, uh, communities, the other towns, the other cities, uh, where we have elected officials. And so I'd like to thank, uh, this group for supporting me in that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley. Um, okay, with that, colleagues, if there are no other comments, we're going to, um, move on to claims. I believe, let's see, let me get my phone. It is already, what time?
12:40.
It is 12:40, and I don't know about you, Mr. Stokes, but I'm hungry and tired. And so maybe we can go in ahead and move through the rest of this agenda with, um, without much, much. All right, so, um, if you would go ahead and get claims on the floor.
Order approving claims appearing at pages one to eight to inclusive thereof on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $4,662,151.39 for and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second. Uh, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Mellonbecker, would you go over larger claims for us?
Good afternoon. Uh, the following represent the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. Uh, first, Richard's disposal in the amount of $851,000 paid out of Fund Nine Sanitation Landfill. This is for residential disposal for April 2024. Second is Richard's disposal in the amount of $851,000 paid out of Fund Nine Sanitation Landfill for residential disposal, May 2024. Third is AT&amp;T in the amount of $604,279.03 paid out of Fund Four Technology Fund. This is for landline phone charges. And the fourth is Entergy in the amount of $353,754.42 paid out of Fund One General Fund. This is for street lighting.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mellonbecker. Uh, colleagues, any questions?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes.
Energy, you said, is street lighting?
Yes.
Do we pay how much?
Uh, so this is a 350, 353,754.42.
Is that monthly, bi-monthly?
Yes, uh, so there's a combination of different Entergy bills, but this one is specifically for the streetlights.
Okay, do we pay it monthly for streetlight?
Yes.
So we're paying what, a little over three, what you said, this 300,000?
353,000, right.
A month?
A month.
A half million a year.
Yes.
Did you have a question, Mr. Stokes? Uh, Mr., I mean, Mr. Foot?
I want to follow up.
No, but Mr. Stokes, I'm sorry. Finish, Mr. Stokes, and then Mr. Foot.
If we're paying almost, um, we'll say 3.5 million.
Right.
What streetlights are we paying for? Do you, have you asked them? There's no lights on Highway 80? Most of the lights in different wards are off. Are we paying that for service where we should have lights on in the city versus lights off?
Yeah, so, so, and there's a list that we receive for, uh, all the different streetlights. Um, uh, there are some traffic lights that are included there. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Wright has additional information, but we, we do receive, uh, a list of where all these lights are.
So we will have that conversation about Highway 80, all the way to Clinton, I think, from Robertson to Clinton, and any other lights that we have in this city where, streets where we do not currently have lights? Thank you. That, that, there's no-
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
Yeah, uh, my question is along those same lines, and that would be, I think it would be helpful for the council to have a clear statement of what the deliverables are from Entergy to the city for this $350,000 we're paying every month. It's not just electricity, obviously. It's for the lights and then replacing the lights that they get burned out. I didn't realize they're involved in traffic lights. We got a lot of issues with traffic lights as well. Does that include them functioning correctly, or is that just the electricity for the traffic lights? So if, if you could get a, a statement of what the deliverables are on our contracts, the Entergy that we're paying for every month, that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, with respect to the traffic lights, uh, Councilman Foot, they just service the power to the traffic lights. They don't service the lights themselves. Uh, we had a meeting with stakeholders. I believe some of you may have been there last week. Uh, maybe you weren't, but-
I wasn't.
Yeah, well, I don't know why they didn't invite, uh, but they, they invited, or maybe they did, but they, they invited Board of Supervisors, uh, my office, and some other community members. Wasn't in charge of the invitation, so, so don't hold me accountable.
No, we got it. I think if someone was, was, we're out of town.
Okay, so, uh, I asked Mr. Fazakali for a meeting. Uh, this is one of the primary, this is essentially the primary thing I want to talk to him about. Uh, I know that one of the challenges, and council members have spoken to this, is that as you see lights out, uh, some of you have expressed frustration that, one, it's our responsibility to get the light pole numbers. Uh, so I want to talk to him about a more, uh, efficient process of dealing with these. Uh, so, and we'll, we'll also ask for a written statement, like you asked for Councilman Foot, of, of what all, uh, our payment entail, what it, what it provides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we all would like to get a copy of that.
I would almost like to do a night ride, you know, uh, because we, I think it would be beneficial. Uh, if not with the council, then, then our, you know, our team, our executive team can go out and try to, I know we can't ride the whole city, uh, but we'll, we'll try to at least identify some prime, prime spots.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you.
Um, travel, I requested travel, haven't received it yet.
Travel, so I-
From the Mass Office of Councilmembers.
Okay.
The day we had at New Hope.
So I was not aware of that request. Um, okay.
Okay.
Okay, they say it's coming.
Exactly. Could we get how much money we have in the bank? You know, we keep hearing, we need to know how much we have in the bank. President Banks was trying to get the fund balance where we could know where we stand and trying to bring people on board. You know, over the years, at this point, we should know as a council, how much in the bank.
Yeah, so, so I'll say this, you know, at, at a given day, right, we'll have the bank balances. I think the question you raised about fund balance, this is tied to the audit, um, and I will implore this body to make a selection of an auditing firm. Um, there are a lot of challenges that the team has been experiencing, um, you know, lots of last-minute requests, uh, promises to provide information, you know, saying we're by next week, Friday, you know, I ask, where's the information? You know, I get the response. I, I say by next week. I'll start sending stuff out, right, the end of the week. And so a lot of challenges, but we, we need to get beyond, you know, this point. Um, if we can get the audits completed timely, we'll have updated fund balances. Right now, we do have projected balances, but ideally, we'd like to get through the audits. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any other questions about claims? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr., I didn't see Mr. Foot. How did you, you, all, all opposed? All right, it passes with a vote of, uh, four, three. Thank you. All right, payroll.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims, number 304252, and make an appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on payroll? Hearing none, all in favor? Councilwoman Lee? We've lost her. All right, we now have, um-
Six, zero.
Six, zero. Um, but we, uh, we have, uh, we only have six people attending the meeting now. All right, uh, uh, item number 12.
Order adopting the Department of Revenue's Uniform Assessment Schedule for the assessment calculation and collection of abhorrent taxes on motor vehicles for the City of Jackson and the Jackson Municipal Separate School District for the year 2024, 2025, as considered, examined, corrected, and equalized, subject to the right of taxpayers to be heard on all objections made by them in writing at a meeting of the council commencing July 16th, 2024, and subject to changes and corrections by the council as authorized by law.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second on this item. Uh, we did have some discussion yesterday during work session. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure that we are in communication with the district and ensuring that there is no plan for the superintendent to do any other bun, uh, take out any other buns or do any other increase, uh, before their time lapses. You could just nod and say, y'all in touch.
You're talking about the school district?
Yeah, yeah, school board. Because if they do a bun increase, this going to change. Our bun rate, our takeout bun is going to change.
So the answer is yes.
Yeah, please, please have that conversation, because before we get the budget, we don't want to have to revisit this again because, for some reason, they said that they wanted to take out another bun or something.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Mr. Stokes?
Uh, could you also get from the superintendent the, uh, procedure, uh, for citizens to bid on some of these closed schools? It was, I understand it's a procedure, but the public haven't been told how, and they want to bid on them. Then we understand, Congressman District Two might have funds to help people purchase some of these schools. So could we find out, before we get into the winter time, how we can get these schools in citizens' hands? So at Mary Jones, we have homeless in there now. Homeless are in, it, it makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, Mr. Mellonbecker, if you could provide a copy to me as well. I'm not sure how you were going to do it. Yes, the same thing. I have folks interested in how to acquire these buildings and stuff, so. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? It's six, zero. Thank you. Item number 13.
Order approving payment of invoices for services received by the Jackson Police Department from Live Oak Psychological Associates.
So move.
Second. We have a motion in a second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Who's here to answer questions for the police department?
Uh, is there anyone here that could answer us a question from Mr. Stokes on this item? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you.
Bridgette Morgan with the City Attorney's Office.
We have a lot of violence and other things taking place, uh, throughout the city. Do we offer our officers counseling, uh, maybe an opportunity to come and talk to someone in a setting that ain't, that's not so, um, questionable?
I'm not aware of anything outside of Live Oaks. This is what they offer. Anytime there is a, um, officer-involved shooting, anything of that nature, Live Oaks offers counseling. Doctors are there to make sure they're ready to return back to work.
I was just saying, Councilman Stokes, the Chaplain Program is still, for those that like Reverend Jenkins and those, the Chaplain Program is still going.
Is it mandatory?
Yes.
It is mandatory?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, great. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I'm too concerned about our police officers. Is there any routine programs? I mean, some of the things that they see on a day-to-day basis, you just can't, you know, you need some other way to, you need some way to deal with it. So is there any routine programs that the police department is offering their folks to make sure that, I mean, aside from a shooting-involved incident?
Yes, sir.
Is there something else that's provided that could help them deal with stress, deal with the trauma, deal with this stuff that's going on in their head?
Not outside of what they can do on their own. I will give it Chief Wade to see what we can do about providing it for them.
Thank you. I appreciate it. If you can let me know something, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item number 14.
Order revising the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for the Jackson Fire Department.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments?
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. All right, hearing no other comments? Yes. Oh, okay, you have a question.
I guess I'm asking the fire department because we still get all these complaints about AMR. And what are y'all doing to correct? And when I say y'all, and maybe it shouldn't be directly the fire department responsibility, but someone has got to cure this problem. People everywhere you go now, people saying they calling for service, nobody showing up, or they tell you they can't come. Something got to change.
Okay. Chief Harmon, Assistant Fire Chief. About a couple of months back, we did a RFP for the city. You all voted for the district. So we had the district and then we tried to get a RFP done so we could get a company to come in and service the district. And that effort was stopped by, it was stopped by the judge. I don't know which one it is. We would have to speak with legal. We went through... Yeah, Judge Thomas.
We cannot just sit back and people dying, people not getting serviced. I'm saying that if we got to keep this company, they need to improve themselves. You can't just sit back and people calling. I got hung up on, other people getting hung up on, you know, all these excuses. It seemed like somewhere down the line, it's going to be the fire department, the legal department, somebody got to make sure that when people call for an ambulance, they get ambulance service quickly, instead of people having to drive people in their own cars.
So where is this legal? Do you have any insight?
Yes, this is something we've been working on pretty actively. Prior to me being city attorney, what happened was just exactly what Chief Harmon just mentioned. Judge Thomas in Heinz County Chancery Court issued an order stopping the city from proceeding with an RFP. We filed a motion to reconsider that, and we're close but aren't quite sure how to attack that order yet, but it will be appealed, or there will be a new hearing, or there will be a new lawsuit. And I'd be happy to discuss some of the details of that in executive session, but I don't want to be speaking of legal strategy in the public meeting. But it is something that we were actively talking about this week.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, to the Finance Department, as we get to the close of this fiscal year and get ready to go into budget, I know that typically we see departments come in with budget revisions, but you know, those budget revisions could either be carryover into our fund balance, which we are required to have at 7.5%. You know, I want you to make sure that there's a running tab on that, to make sure that that carryover that goes over to our fund balance, our rainy day fund, is where it needs to be, because that's going to be very important for us. The other thing to the fire department, I know that, I would assume that this, these funds transferred for, you know, cleaning supplies, uniforms, and those other things are necessities. Would this carryover into the next fiscal year or this, it will? Okay, okay. So you'll have some room. Of course, you'll have that back in the budget again, but then this would carry over. Would you have some room to do, you know, some of the things that, you know, as far as your fire departments, and some of the things that need to be addressed? I know you got a new one on board. Don't you have a new fire department?
New fire department?
Not new, but newly repaired. New station, yeah, 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 yeah. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, new station. But we still have some with some issues like roofing, minor things like that, and that budget is mostly in public works?
Yes, it's still, that should be still coming from that CDBG funding.
Okay.
The remainder of the funds that's going to the contractor should be in that funding.
All right. And as far as your big line request, I know it's been your big line request for the last two years, you still need that big ladder truck you've always talked about, right?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we could use ladder truck and a few other ones.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, any other questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item number 15.
Order amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 municipal budget of the Department of Information Technology.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Mr. Banks?
Yeah, this is just to, I tell you, general. First of all, thank you for whoever gave the council access back, or granted us the access. I think there's some slight confusion into the access that we're supposed to have. From my understanding, looking at the email chain, and I was attending National Black Caucus when I was looking at it, so I didn't get a chance to read it all thoroughly, that it mirrored my access, but I don't know if it mirrored the access from the time when me, Councilman Priest, Councilwoman Lindsay, Councilman Foot received the training on what the council should have when we first purchased a municipal. And so if we could, based on what I was told by the CFO, that we were going to have that full access back. So if it's something that we need to do on our end with we filling out a request form, but I would assume that the request form that went with it when we first received the license will be mine, but the new council members that came in after that election date will have to do new one. So if we could fix that as soon as possible.
Maria Reed, information technology. So I have a group that's assigned to this task.
Okay.
They are going to come over, see what you have, have you to log in, and go through all of the screens to make sure you're seeing what you need to see. So that's the first step. And you will also have training on...
Didn't you do my training?
Yes, I did.
Oh, okay. I'm good then. I don't need no more training. I got trained by the best. But I just want to make sure, because as you was training, you was talking particularly about how we could use it for council to do it well. And so I want to make sure that that was on board, that as you were advising us at that time, that that's what we had.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Reed, quick question. I see Mr. Hartley. Will your office be setting up a schedule with, through Ms. Jordan for all of us?
Yes, they've already been in communications with her.
That's awesome. Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Dr. Reed, one of those architect of a lot of our municipal issues, the contractor there. I think his name is Pierre?
Yes.
Okay. He hadn't been paid in how long?
No, he's been paid.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I thought there was an invoice pending.
I think that's the other one. I know what you're talking about.
Information technology has paid for results bids.
Just correction. I think speaking to what you were saying, he has not been paid. His contract did not get approved and...
That last time around.
Right. And so what Dr. Reed is saying, she's paid her portion. That was prior to that order being presented, but his contract does need to get approved, ratified.
And it's been, it's been a long time, hasn't it?
It has been a long time, and he's needed for a lot of the work that, you know, Harvard Group is doing, and also some of the work that you need to do, right, some of the training.
Right. You know, he's been a big aid to the city and a lot of our software needs, and we need to take care of him. Are we looking at it coming forward, before the council within the next few weeks?
Yeah, so one is we're trying to get this clarified because we've been informed that, you know, that would not pass until we had that resolution. And so...
Okay, so we got that resolved, so we can push that forward?
Yes. So that will be coming.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item number 16.
Order authorizing the mayor to procure 500 Microsoft 365 exchange license from Metric Solutions.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item 17.
Order approving the procurement of five Microsoft 365 GS software licenses and authorizing the mayor to execute the document furnished by Metric Solutions at an annual cost of, quote, $3,420.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item...
Excuse me, one second. Councilwoman Lindsay, it's supposed to read 365 G5 software.
Okay, we need to, we're going to recall that vote.
I remove my second. Or I can do a motion to reconsider.
No, no, a motion to reconsider.
Motion. Make a motion to reconsider on the floor. Have a second?
Second.
We got to go back and revert on this one. We just did. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of reconsider? All right, it's six, zero. All right, would the clerk please get the item on the floor again?
Order approving the procurement of five Microsoft 365 G5 software licenses and authorizing the mayor to execute the document furnished by Metric Solutions at an annual cost of, quote, $3,420.
So moved.
So, second. We have a motion and a second. The item is now on the floor. What amendment do we need, Dr. Reed?
It should read 365 G5 software.
It does.
Where are we?
It says GS.
It says GS.
No, it's a five in the actual document.
Okay.
The actual document that would be published is a five.
Okay.
Yes.
I see. Okay.
So there's no need for it.
So we don't, okay, we don't have to...
Motion withdrawn.
Who made the motion?
Motion withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. I withdraw my second. Okay. Now we're moving on to item number 18 after all that.
Order revising the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for the Department of Human and Cultural Services.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Madam President. My question has to do with these particular, the revisions where the money's going to repair facilities. And I normally don't think of that coming out of the human health, or the, excuse me, the Human and Cultural Services, because it really ought to be coming out of a maintenance budget that the city has, and we upped it to $1 million, and it probably needs to go to $5 million. And if we just, I think it's a mistake to try to repair this, all this, use their budget and move money around. We need to have a firmer grip on our maintenance expenses so we can budget the right amount every year, because we have been underbudgeting for, ever since I came on the council. And I just want to make this point that, you know, the elevator repair at Valiumar Hall for $28,000, the art center for $21,000, and other facilities and repairs, a hazmat cleanup of the attic, those things need to come out of the maintenance budget. And if necessary, we ought to transfer the money to that line item and then pay for them from there so we really understand where our expenses are. That's my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Good points. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, you know, colleagues, and I know I probably say this every year when we get to the end, when we see all these budget revisions coming from departments, because again, the concern is what will that lead us in fund balance? I don't know if Mr. Melanbecker left out, but I tend to go ahead and request if we could go ahead and get Dr. Omari, or Dr. Wright, just a running tab of what our carryover percentage is, so that we could kind of know that our fund balance is still going to be in a healthy shape with all these budget revisions. That's all. If we could just get that at some point while we're doing this, because I know there probably going to be some more coming before us, but to just kind of make sure that there's a readiness, if we can get that at some point.
Okay, thank you. Did, yes, Dr. Omari?
We can ask Finance to get that for you. I just want to address Councilman Foot's comment.
Please continue.
And there is, the way it's set up is departments have maintenance budgets within their department. And some things, the general maintenance budget takes care of, other things that are really specific to, like, Human and Cultural Services has the senior centers and some community centers. They oftentimes will get grant funds and other things that they use to do maintenance and things for their facilities. Now, I think it's an excellent idea to have a real grasp on how much we are spending on maintenance. And as we move towards more centralization so that we understand, that's something that I'd like for our CFO to think about. But I just want to explain why those monies are within that budget.
Can you just respond?
Mr. Foot?
But it did require having to revise the budget. In other words, it didn't come out of the maintenance line in Human Cultural Services. They had to move money over to there to make those maintenance. So if, to the extent they had a maintenance line in there, they obviously didn't have enough.
They didn't.
And that's the main point I'm trying to make. It's not, and I'm going to support this, but the main thing is we don't put enough money in the budget for maintenance across the city for all the facilities. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, no, I think you're both right, but I also remember, Councilman Foot, that there was a little extra put in there that may be reimbursed from the insurance settlement. Just wanted to put that out there.
I do think that when we start the budget process this year, it would be really great if we could have everything that's been spent on maintenance, regardless of what budget it's in, to Mr. Foot's point, so we can clearly see, you know, where the funds are and what has been spent to maintain buildings and facilities. But I think he makes a very good point, is that it feels a little bit like patchwork quilt sometimes. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? All in favor? It's six, zero. Thank you, colleagues. Item number 19.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute 11 commercial services agreements with integrated pest control maintenance to provide pest control services at 11 facilities managed by the Department of Human and Cultural Services for the 2024-2025 fiscal year and approving payment in the amount of $5,424.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Item 20.
Order revising the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item 21.
Order ratifying and authorizing the mayor to accept professional fitness instruction services from Bridget Brooks and Natasha Donald and authorizing payment for same.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second on this item. Any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Okay, six, zero. Thank you. Item 22.
Order requesting approval of future professional DJ entertainment services to Shake 'Em Up Sounds for professional entertainment services that will be performed at the annual fireworks extravaganza being held on Wednesday, July 3, 2024, at Smithville Stadium.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item. Colleagues, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Colleagues, number 23.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Artisan's Pyrotechnics, Inc. for, to produce a fireworks display for the city's Fourth of July celebration being held on Wednesday, July 3, 2024, at Smithville Stadium and improvement payment for said fireworks display.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second on that one. Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Kind of late. Real tight.
Amen. Any other comments, Mr. Stokes? Okay, any other colleagues? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Item 24.
Order requesting addition of $5,027.50 to contract number 2024256 so that Robinson Produce of Mississippi LLC can continue providing timely deliveries of fresh animal feed produce to the Jackson Zoo for the remainder of the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Hearing none, all in favor. Six zero, thank you, item number twenty-five.
Order requesting ratification of past professional cleaning and maintenance services performed by Facilities Services and Remodeling LLC, FSR, at various city-owned facilities and improvement payment for same and requesting approval of future professional cleaning and maintenance services to be performed by FSR not to exceed five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor.
I vote no, Madam President.
Opposed? Okay, so we have a vote of five one, thank you, item twenty-six.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Sandra R. Liddell, and Benjamin Wiggins, DBA Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, thank you, it's six zero, item twenty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Dolores Finch, and Multicon, Inc. for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, colleagues, any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor. Six zero, thank you, item number twenty-eight.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Car E. Fraser, Francis A. Fraser, and Benjamin Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor. Six zero, thank you, item number twenty-nine.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, Bobby J. Chambers, and Multicon, Inc. for the Use of Healthy Home Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor. Okay, it's a vote of five zero. Item number thirty.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Jackson, James Mays, and Benjamin Wiggins Doing Business as Ben Wiggins Remodeling for the Use of Healthy Homes Production Grant Funds to Implement Housing Repair Activities under the Department of Planning and Development's Healthy Homes Production Grant Program.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor. It's a vote of five zero. Item number thirty-one.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Community Foundation for Mississippi to serve as the fiscal agent to the National Folk Festival in Jackson, Mississippi in the years 2025 through 2027.
So moved.
Second, we have an amendment.
Yeah, so, this, the contract as it is spelled out in the order is still being changed a little bit, I was trading emails as recently as right before this meeting with Jane Alexander of Community Foundation of Mississippi, they've accepted our revisions tentatively, but their board has to meet one more time to look at it, I wanted to go over what those changes were, they're relatively minor, but I wanted to make sure the council is aware of them, in particular, there are several references throughout the contract now to the Festival Executive Committee, which is defined already in the contract with the National Folk, the group that's putting on the festival, excuse me, I can't think of the name right now, so that's been reflected to show who's making changes, let me find my email real quick, we weren't able to incorporate them all before getting it in here, paragraph three B.
Let me ask you, do we need to just hold this?
Well, here's the issue, we can, the issue is this, the fiscal agent, we have to have that MOU with the fiscal agent in order for the festival planning to move forward, and so planning wants that as soon as they can.
Okay.
And so what I'd like to have is council approval for the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
With these changes, assuming CFM approves of them as well at their board meeting.
Okay.
If not, it just slows the process a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, please continue.
So there's a paragraph that deals with how funds would be returned either to the city or to donors, CFM wanted to clarify that sometimes donors give significant sums but have restrictions on them, say, for example, if the festival isn't put forward, we get our money back as opposed to you giving it to the city, which makes sense, and we've agreed to do that, CFM, as part of their fee, they agreed to a ceiling of ten percent of the project budget for any of the costs that would go to them, but they also asked for a floor, that's going to be something that's going to have to be negotiated, they wanted it to be a floor of fifty thousand dollars a year, I don't know if that's a good number or not, I've got to get with planning on it, we're going to leave that one blank for now and bring it back to the council and the mayor depending on what planning is able to work out with them on that. We defined what those indirect costs were a little more specifically, they're generally administrative costs that go into overhead and the work that CFM does, not only for this but with others, so it would include administrative support, accounting, compliance, donation receiving or forwarding, et cetera, the job of a fiscal agent. We added some language to make, to give the city some more flexibility in paragraph three for modifications if such are necessary because it's a three-year agreement, there are some negotiations between CFM and the National Council for the Traditional Arts about how the accounting would work for this, the city really is agnostic about that issue, but we made some changes to the contract reflect that they would, that CFM would either set up a separate account or provide accounting services in conjunction with what the National Council wants them to do, because that's who really is going to be handling the money. We also added some language to give the city the right to get certain information from the project, whether it's through CFM or otherwise, so that we can better audit what's going on and express any dissatisfaction if there is any. And that's really it, there's one other paragraph that dealt with, to clarify who would be responsible for other acts, the CFM would be liable, for example, for the acts of vendors or performers or whatever, so that's in there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, colleagues, could I get a motion to accept the amendments as proposed by the city attorney?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the amendments as proposed by the city attorney, all in favor?
You need it.
All right, it is a vote of five zero, what's wrong, would you please make sure the clerk gets?
What I was going to propose, I should have said this, is I'm going to provide the email that has the summary of the revisions to the clerk to attach with, that'll have the amendments, and then we'll provide the amended agreement once it's complete, yeah.
That would be really helpful, thank you so much, colleagues, any questions or comments about this item as amended? Yes, sir, Mr. Foot.
When does this program begin, this Folk Festival, when does it actually start?
There were two dates, and now I can't, I just blanked, I think it's November of twenty-five, I believe is the first date.
Mr. Mellon Becker.
Oh, hey, here we go, here are the real answers.
So there'll be, I'm sorry, Eka Hoover Economic Development, there'll be a soft launch in November of this year, and then every November for the following three years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, it's a vote of five zero for the item as amended, item number thirty-two.
Order ratifying the submission of an application to the Mississippi Department of Transportation Multi Model Transportation Improvement Program for the funding in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the support of J-Train operations.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item, college, colleagues, any questions on this one?
On J-Train?
Yes, sir, you got a question, Mr. Stokes?
I'm trying not to ask, but I got to vote no. Because we need some seats, we need seats, terrible, older people standing up and leaning on the lip pole, we got to get some seats.
You're talking about on the boat, on the, are you talking about shelters or are you talking about the bus?
Shelters are seats, well, I'm talking about either one, in terms of people waiting, you know, a lot of people, we see them, and they need somewhere to sit, okay, I need.
Thank you, all right, any other questions or comments on this item, hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, it's a vote of five in favor, one abstention, item number thirty-three.
Order authorizing the mayor to apply to the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration for the Congressional Apportement under Section 5307 of Title 49 of the United States Code Urbanized Area Grant for Transit Capital Operating Assistance and Transportation Related Planning in the amount of three million five hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred and three dollars, and for the Congressional Apportement under Section 5339 of Title 49 of United States Code Bus and Bus Facilities Formula Program in the amount of two hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? It's a vote of six zero, thank you, colleagues, item number thirty-four.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number five and related documents to the agreement with Kinetics Transportation Group to finalize, implement, and evaluate the new bus network plan for the Jackson Public Transportation System, J-Train.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, I believe there's, is there also an amendment to this item? No, okay, any questions or comments, colleagues?
Did they ever have a meeting between J-Train, the union, and bus drivers?
Does anybody know if that meeting took place, Dr. Omari?
There was a meeting between MV and the mayor's office separately, then we had a second meeting with the union, and there's a third meeting that's scheduled where we will have them both together, and that's sometime in the middle of this month.
What's going to be in the new bus network, what is?
That's something Christine Welch can address.
I'm sorry, your mic's not on, thank you.
Christine Welch Transit Services, it's the network we rolled out on March fourth, we're just doing an assessment to see how effective it is.
At that point, if it come back to the council, won't it?
No, we've already rolled it out and everything, this is for us to go back now and look at the numbers and see how effective it is, like South Jackson only had one bus, they now have four.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Vote no, Madam President.
Opposed?
One.
Okay, we've got five in favor and one opposed, item number thirty-five.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute contracts between the City of Jackson and various organizations for the use of 2022 Community Development Block Grant Funds totaling two hundred twelve thousand six hundred and eleven dollars to implement various public service activities in the Jackson metropolitan statistical area.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, we have five in favor, one abstention, all right, number thirty-six.
Order authorizing Amendment Number One to the Contract with CD FL Architects and Plus Engineers, a Professional Association, to provide additional architecture and engineering services for the renovation of improvements to the Public Safety Communications and Information System Building.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, colleagues, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, it's a vote of six zero, item number thirty-seven.
Order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Countess Zaro C. Davis for architectural and engineering services for renovations of the old fire station building two zero one President Street.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second on this item, any questions, colleagues? I have one quick question, what all is going to be in this building, this is the building next door, right?
Louis Wright, CAO, the old fire station will consist of not only administration, the finance department, there will be also some planning and development in that building in terms of some space for a business incubator type program, so it will be fully utilized, and we're looking forward to getting it renovated.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Is there anything else going in it? Okay.
Eka Hoover Economic Development, so, yeah, there'll be a small business incubator, we'll also do a measure of workforce development programming as well.
Thank you very much, colleagues, any other questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Where would finance go?
You're going to have to get to the mic, I'm sorry, just grab somebody's.
Yes, some of the divisions will be in that building as well.
And then some will stay in the hood building?
Sorry.
The rest will stay in the hood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, any other questions, colleagues? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, it's a vote of six zero, item number thirty-eight.
Order authorizing settlement with Partridge Sibley Industrial Services, Inc., Charles Carroll Partridge as executor of the estate of D. Richard Partridge deceased Justin Mahfus and Louis Garrett in the matter of Jackson, Mississippi versus Gold Coast Commodities, Inc., et al., Civil Action Number 21-CV-00398-EFP.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second on this item, Mr. Martin.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, so this is John Hawkins, John has represented the city in this litigation and is here to answer any questions, I would say that the settlement and the money amount, obviously we've come public records, we've been through that, but if we want to ask specific questions that lead up to the settlement or that deal with strategy, because it may not be approved, for example, I would, we need to go to executive session for that conversation, but with that said, Mr. Hawkins is here.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, Mr. Banks.
Yeah, no, I just want to say thank you for your work on this, it's been a while, but just appreciate your hard work on making sure that we could recoup based on our damages.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that, I hope that the council.
Did you want to make a summary statement?
Well, just, I would say, just in summary, I mean, this was a bad situation, obviously, and something that the City of Jackson needed like a shotgun blast to its head, which was to introduce toxic wastewater to our sewage system, and so it was a terrible course of conduct, we've outlined that in the complaint, what we've asked you to approve today is to settle with some of the defendants, not all of them, so the case would proceed, and the defendants with whom we have asked y'all to approve settlement, they, there are certain issues that I've provided in a memorandum that is for your edification to inform you whether or not it's advisable to settle, and it is for a number of reasons, I don't want to get into all of those publicly, but it's advisable to settle and it's a good, it's a good recovery under all these circumstances for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Foot?
You said you were going to settle with some, does that mean there could be other settlements down the road as you proceed? Councilman Foot, yes, it's possible, there are a number of circumstances that complicate this matter, including federal court criminal proceedings that have been underway for a number of years, but the shorter answer is yes, and we will be working on that, trying to resolve those issues with remaining defendants as well for the benefit of the city. Yes.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Stokes?
Yes, sir.
I look at the amount that we're receiving, and I don't want to get into the facts, but this kind of delegation, couldn't we have asked for a little more?
I think that the best way to answer that question, and I can provide details, would be to do so in executive session.
Oh, no, no, I call you.
Give me a call. I assure you, though, as your lawyer, I assure you, it's in the best interest of the city.
It's all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins, all right, colleagues, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, so it's five in favor and one abstention, all right, colleagues, we're moving on to nine, thirty-nine.
Order authorizing payment of fifteen thousand dollars to Robert Chambers for full and complete settlement of claims and no admission of liability.
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, does this one have an amendment? Am I making this up? Okay.
No, we had, we substituted out.
Oh, okay.
As of this morning to update some information about it, and I can answer any questions about this one.
So I move that we amend as substituted.
Second. All right, we have a, you're moving that we're accepting.
Amen as substituted by legal.
Yeah, as substituted by legal, all right, and I'm in the second, all right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment as proposed? All right, it's a vote of six zero. All right, we now have the item before us as amended. Mr. Martin, would you like to just give us a brief summary and highlight what, what was changed?
Sure. So nothing was really changed. There is some additional information provided. This is a lawsuit that was filed by a seventy-year-old man, Robert Chambers, a few years ago. His allegation was he was at a gas, I'm sorry, I have a bug flying around in my face. He was at a gas station with some other individuals. Some JPD officers saw them, believed they might be drinking, might be smoking marijuana, asked them to disperse. The testimony changes after that, but what Mr. Chambers says happened is that Officer, Officer Short followed him to his house, got out of his car, stormed up to Mr. Chambers' pickup truck on the driver's side, pulled him out of his truck, slammed him on the ground, which resulted in him in breaking his hip, placed him under arrest. He was taken to hospital where he found out that he had the broken hip. He was later charged with three or four minor traffic citations. He was not charged with DUI, which was what Officer Short said was what he was investigating. The case was first filed in state court. It was moved to federal court. We obtained a dismissal of the city. Because Officer Short, because of the allegations against Officer Short, we had to have outside conflicts counsel to represent him. So they've been, Michael Corey's firm has been representing him. They attempted to get the case dismissed but were unsuccessful. They appealed that to the Fifth Circuit. The Fifth Circuit said that it should not be dismissed, so it's scheduled for trial now. So this is one of these business decision settlements. You know, I think the city's chances are maybe fifty-fifty in court. We wouldn't be defending, but the outside counsel would, which means we would incur significant more attorney's fees paying for Officer Short's fees. We can settle for fifteen thousand dollars. That is a hundred percent, that is going to be less than we'll pay the attorneys to defend him, not to mention any potential judgment or so forth. So that's the reason we recommend the settlement. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hartley.
Yes, Attorney Martin, is his side okay with this as part of that settlement? You know, you said fifteen thousand.
Right.
Is his side completely okay with this?
Yes, yes, yes. That's, he knows that's the number. If the council approves it, then that will be a final settlement.
Okay, I just, I remember all the occasions, I just wanted to double check.
No, no, this, this one is, this one's been pre-negotiated pending council approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor? It's five zero. Thank you, colleagues. All right, we are now at item forty.
Order of the Jackson City Council authorizing payment to Mayor and Percy Jackson in the amount of-
I'm holding all of my items.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is one of Mr. Stokes', and he is holding his items. I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention to that name. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. So we're holding until the next meeting. Can we just roll all of his items over to the next agenda? Thank you. All right, item number forty-one is also Mr. Stokes'. Forty-two is Mr. Stokes', and it was already taken care of. Let me see. All right, that's all of Mr. Stokes'. All right, Mr. Foot, number forty-three.
Thank you, Madam President. The, um, this item is about the rent payments on Smithwells Stadium. The, this goes back to our, uh, the item that came before us back on the eighteenth of January in twenty-twenty-four. They, the, we came, the, um, vendor that was, had, had a contract with Smithwells came before us and was asking for some relief on the situation he was renting Smithwells Park for, had a contract to lease him, I guess is the proper terminology. Some things have come to light since that time where the council voted in favor of that to give him, give him relief on what he had agreed to initially, which was a payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year to, for the use of Smithwells Park. And so because of some things that have come to light, um, there's, I've got a number of questions that I'd like to ask, and I provided Attorney Martin some of them yesterday. But one of them was, was the vendor back in January of twenty-twenty-four, was he in default on the contract? I can give you some more of these questions.
Yeah, no, the, one at a time is probably better. To my knowledge, no, but I don't know that for certain. I wasn't dealing with the contract at that time. What I can say more generally is there were certainly payments that weren't made timely, and there was a modification to the contract that was negotiated sometime late last year. I think it was only executed recently. But it, what it, that modification, which was approved by the council, cited to, or recited what payments had been missed and set out a payment schedule for him to catch up on those payments. There was also a credit of some sort, for lack of a better phrase, that was provided because of work that had been done by the group to the stadium in terms of upgrades and so forth.
Okay. The, the contract called for a performance bond, I think it was for five million dollars. Was that, was the performance, was there in fact a performance bond?
I haven't been able to find the answer to that yet.
Okay.
And Matt was just here, Matt will probably know, but I hadn't been able to get the answer to that one yet.
So my understanding-
But you're right about the contract. It is in the contract.
Yeah, and so the, the, the performance bond will be for, a way for us to get paid the money we're due. That's the reason you have a performance bond, is so that if for some reason the contract, the vendor's not able to, to pay the performance bond, insurance company will, will pay you the proceeds. Now, at that point in time, I think we were due about a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. That would, the contract went into effect, I think, two thousand and nineteen. That would have been about five hundred thousand dollars that we were, had not been paid. My understanding is we'd been paid about thirty-two thousand dollars.
I'm not sure the exact payments, but what you're, what you're asking about in terms of the performance bond, that's, that's generally correct. I don't know, I wasn't part of, I'm not trying to pass the buck here, I wasn't part of the negotiations. I, I don't want to speculate, but, but it looks like we didn't move on the performance bond and instead went with the modification to try to get the payments caught up that way.
Okay. Another question that came, comes to mind is, we forget, we evidently, in the negotiation, we went through to come to the meeting in January the eighteenth. A lot of the obligation or debt, if you want to call it debt, that he owed the city was forgiven to come up with this new modification. Is that something we can legally do?
I don't think it was forgiven, basing, and I'm basing this only on the, the contract and the modification. But as I read the contract and the modification, the debt wasn't forgiven, it was more the equivalent of two things. One was sort of a, think of it as a like-kind transaction. One, so, so first, we said, the city said, here are the improvements that were made. It's my understanding there were some meetings where receipts were gone through and, and confirmation of these expenses were established, and credit was given in lieu of payment for those improvements. And then part two was, beginning with this modification, as soon as it is executed, if it hasn't been already, there are specific calendar dates laid out for making back payments to continue to catch up, as well as making the payments that are now due.
Okay. And, and the one that's, I think, was surprising to a lot of people when they found out about it, was that sometime, I guess in March or so, it came to light that the vendor had signed a contract with the Veterans Administration, the VA Hospital, over on the other side of, on Woodrow Wilson, the other side of the interstate, for overflow parking in the parking lot at Smithwells, for which the VA was, is paying him, this was, I believe this contract occurred in, in twenty-twenty-one. And the contract is for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for, I think, five years, or maybe longer, but it's at least three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year for five years. Now, my question is, when, when we went into the negotiations, and granted, you weren't the attorney there, did anybody in the city know about this VA contract that was paying the vendor three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year?
I can't speak to that. That would need to be something either from the administration or planning perhaps that was involved in those talks. I did check to try to find that contract. I haven't found it yet, but I know there's some internet reports of it. I don't, I don't have any reason to doubt those reports or trust them one way or the other. But I don't know what was spoken about in the negotiations, because the first, first role I had in this was looking at this amended contract.
Sure. So if you, if you assume that that, in fact, is the case, that he does have this contract with the VA for three hundred and seventy thousand a year, then you have to wonder, was, that is a material for a contract that called for him to pay us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That is a material omission. I think he had an obligation, if he signed this contract two years ago, to let the city know that he was making three hundred and seventy thousand a year on parking for the parking lot there adjacent to Smithwells Park.
I certainly think it's a reasonable question to ask. I don't know if that's something that I can address. It's a reasonable question to ask, I just don't know the answer.
And I, I wonder, I, that, you know, if he doesn't have the performance bond, if he hasn't done, hasn't, he hasn't made the payments that he was due for the past four years. If he doesn't have the performance bond, which is, was, was a requirement of the contract, then the, the next obvious question would be, should we just void the contract altogether and take back Smithwells Park and with it the VA contract for three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year?
That's, so to get farther into that would probably be an executive session question, but the question of whether the contract would be terminable and whether that's a wise choice, again, I hear the question and I'm happy to discuss it.
No, I didn't expect you to answer that.
Sure, sure, I understand.
But it is an important question, and it's something that, that we need to get to the bottom of. I feel like we've been taken advantage of. If the contract in fact is with the VA is true, then I think we've been taken advantage of by, by the vendor. And I think it's worth us pursuing, because three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a month, a quarter, a year to the Parks and Rec Department, if we put it into the Parks and Rec Department, that's a healthy addition to the budget they've got to cover all the different things we're trying to do. We can't complain about not having, you know, you know, parks and rec and food for the, for the zoo if we turn our, and, and don't pursue a contract like that, that, that is out there.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Mr. Banks?
Yeah, I'm not aware, not gonna speak to the VA in that, because I'm not aware that. I just wanted to just bring back from memory, one of the reasons why we reduced his payment was because of the amount of upfront money that he proved or showed where he made investments in Smithwells. I, for one, because I use it with MISA, Mississippi U Sports Association, can vouch to the shape of the bathrooms that were deplorable. I can vouch to the foundation damage at the top and the bad painting, what just was done. I, I do know that there were significant upgrades done. I do know that there were partnerships with the Hank Aaron Sports Academy and the Atlanta Braves. I actually went when the Atlanta Braves came. I, I do know that there are some people that weren't pleased because there were certain historical figures of color that were painted on the, on the, as a mirror out there at Smithwells, especially when we talk about some of the people that used to do business who are upset and saying all this other kind of stuff about it. And so, you know, when it comes to that, you know, I, I would say that Mr. Timothy Bennett, with the history of what he's done on the Gulf Coast, and with the history of what he's done with minor league baseball, is an outstanding person. And I think that if there are significant questions, before we just try to find a way to oust people, especially people that are bringing a historic change to the city, that deal with people of color, I think that we should come sit down and let's talk about, and all being declared about what's happening. That's all I say on it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Banks, any other comments on this? Sorry, thank you, Mr. Banks. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Foot, are you?
I will get a copy of the contract, VA contract.
Turn, turn your, your mic. Per Dr. Omari's request, I'll get a copy of the contract and get it to her in the legal department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Foot. All right, let's see, next, Mr. Foot, is yours demolition of Hotel O?
All right, thank you. This is, I'm so glad, I think I'm glad that the judge told us to take down the hotel. And so my question is, when can we get started?
Where's the money?
Do I have to show up with my weed eater? No, but when do we start? How do we get started? How do we do it? And, and where do we come up with the money to do it?
Yeah, so, so to catch everybody up, Judge Reynolds entered an order, I think, on June thirteenth, out of municipal court, that orders the city to demolish Hotel O and to put a lien against the property for the amount. He also ordered our office to provide him a report on what the city's ability financially was to do that. So that's a question for finance and for the council. It's one of the things to discuss today about that, and what a reasonable timeframe is for that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna provide that report to him after I hear what, you know, what the council and finance say they can do. There's a couple other issues related to that order that I need to speak about as well, but that's executive session comments to catch you up completely. But that's where, just, the only other public thing about this is, the original order is still under appeal, and so that prevents a complicated issue as well with Judge, and I'll, I'll speak to that more, in more detail in a moment. But, in other words, Judge Reynolds has entered an order, but he's entered an order in a case that's also under appeal that's currently before the circuit court. So there's a jurisdictional complication.
Did he pay for it?
Uh, no, the hotel has appealed. We won the first appeal. They appealed that decision to circuit court, and I expect we'll win the next one as well. But we're waiting on a hearing date from the, from the judge right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, when I put redistricting on there, Mr. Banks, I had absolutely no idea I was gonna be council president. And so I'm gonna take a deep breath on that one and hold it until I get a chance to just take a breath. All right, so item number forty-six, Grand Gulf Funding, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and this is in reference to the funding that we have that comes in, I guess, on an annual basis. And funding is by the Grand Gulf Nuclear Facility in order to help the municipality to develop hotels, lodgings, and other travel amenities to folks that are evacuating, in case of evacuate, evacuation there at Grand Gulf. Okay. And so, my question is, are we getting in that money? How much? What have we done with that money? Have we in fact used it for its intended purpose, which is to develop along that Highway eighteen corridor, hotels, businesses? I think one time we had lighting projects going on, but is, is there anything else that we've been doing?
Yeah, so Councilman Hartley, in, in the decision is actually typically discussed during budget season. I know we had some extensive discussions, and this body has a prerogative, right, in, in how to apportion the work. I was gonna yield to Councilman Banks if he wanted to share some more details. He's been so involved in this over the years, and I'll yield briefly to him, just to speak to that.
Yeah, so I'm gonna look at sharing, because my memory gives a job, but it's one-point-six million, one-point-nine, one-point-six million?
Five, actually.
One-point-five million.
One-point-five change.
And so at first, before I got onto the council, there was appropriation, a percentage of that that went toward balancing the budget. That was, what, I, I know, but I, my memory, ten percent? And then at one point, it changed to an additional, was it fifty, sixty, somewhere? It was a lot. And, and so it basically, Councilman Hartley, before I got on the council, it was ten percent of that went toward balancing the budget, and ninety percent was supposed to go toward the area. Then when I came in, there was an item that was presented by the First Finance Director, I believe we called him Chip, I can't remember his last name, and it was somewhere around eighty or ninety percent of that that went toward balancing the budget. Then Stan sponsored the item to bring it back down, and I believe it said, what now? Because that's where it is currently. Back at that ten percent? So it's, ten percent of that is used, twenty, ten percent is used to balance the budget, and the rest of it is used at our discretion. And so what we do, normally done in budget season, we allocate that amount and what it would go toward. And so we did, like you said, do the lighting. I think we had talked about cameras. We've done stuff over the years when it comes to that. At one point, we were talking about doing improvement when they were, highest, highest community college wanted to put workforce development for Continental Tires in where retro metro was, but then that fell through. So that's kind of-
Yeah, and again, I just want to, want to see, where are we going on on that? And I appreciate the background.
And I, and I appreciate the, uh, the background and the fact that we will be discussing this during the budget hearing. But, but what is the total balance in there now? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, so that budget for Grand Gulf, uh, it's about nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand. There is about eight hundred and change that's in contingency. And then there was another appropriation for seventy-five thousand. Don't remember exactly what that was.
That was the lights?
I believe so, right.
Okay, and the cameras? That was cameras. I know we have lights.
The cameras, uh...
Where is the lighting project currently?
This was on Highway eighteen.
No, I'm saying, I know where it, I know where it's supposed to be.
The status, I guess, I guess maybe he can, uh...
We're told, uh, that it's the end of the year completed, that they've started some, some work on it.
If I could...
Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
Yeah, since we're talking about Grand Gulf, um, and I know that there are a lot of requests from the council about various things as we enter into budget season. And I believe Councilman Banks, uh, made an endeavor to do this last council, like, last negotiation. If we could have, you know, whether group or individual discussions about what your likely priorities are, then it allows for less surprise in the process and probably less back and forth and, and challenges there. So we would like, um, as, you know, as you know, what you, there may be things that in the process arise as priorities, but if there are some things that you're aware of, you know, today, then that would be helpful.
And one of the things that I've proposed in several, in the past several years is that we at least use some of that funding to clean up that area along Highway eighteen, near the metro, all, all the way up there, because we can't get businesses to want to move in when it looks bad. And, and then I think at one point, I proposed a, just putting it, uh, money into, uh, the public works or Parks and Recs, whoever dealt with the lawnmowers and all that. We, we have to, I, I believe, one of the first steps is having to clean up that area in order to entice business, number one, to stay the hotels, number two, to want to move into that area. And I think that, that would help the, um, come under the definition of what this fund was intended to, in the first place.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, like, once again, that's, that's helpful so that we don't get into budget season and then we've balanced something with that money and then we, we have a different challenge. So, uh, I think that's something we can look into, uh, and, and something we can do. I, I, I assume we can, we can do it and, and start moving, uh, in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hartley, anything else on this?
I know, just that, uh, again, it's been proposed the last couple of years, and it really would be good if we in fact used it for those purposes, especially along that Highway eighteen corridor.
Mr. Banks?
In the business area.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Banks?
Yeah, no, I, I would say to Councilman Hartley, that is duly noted. I agree with you. The administration has, for the most part, left whatever was left of that money up to the council's discretion to kind of deal with that area, especially those of us that, that kind of are in that area. But the thing that I think would be different about this time than previous times is we had to use portions of that money, especially around eighteen, nineteen, twenty, to help balance our budget, because we had to lend, loan to the, uh...
Convention Center?
No, not the Convention Center.
The water sewer?
Water sewer. But now that we don't have to do that anymore, it, 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 for the first time, really clears us up to be able to, you know, deal with that.
Yeah, the, the cycle of problems with Grand Gulf started, it actually predated our service.
It did.
There was a decision that the council wanted to put that money towards revitalization of the area, which is not problematic. What happened is, is that it was balancing the budget, and when it came to budget closeout, no one decided how they were going to fill the gap that it was, it was, uh, creating. And so when we had to close the budget out and be in accordance with the law, because you can't, you know, in on an imbalanced budget, it then required that we move it. So it was never like a, you know, the administration had some interest or desire or pet projects that we wanted to do with it, it was that we just needed to balance the budget. That's, that's what we, so I think, the point is, I think we, we focus on the fact, I think that there are some opportunities here. If we start talking about them, you know, before we get into, you know, the depth, the, the deepest part of budget season where, you know, most things have been settled and then we're just moving them around and we're having our Department of Administration run numbers in the eleventh hour, it just makes everybody feel more comfortable when we kind of walk in with expectations.
All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on now to, um, uh, item forty-seven, property liens for city cleanup. Mr. Hartley?
Uh, yes. I think Ms. Grace has some information on that. We briefly talked yesterday. It was my concern that, you know, as we say, we don't have money to, uh, clean up properties. We want to make sure that, uh, when we do allocate the city's money, taxpayers' money, that we get properly reimbursed, uh, for that. And to that end, can you kind of tell us what we're, where we're at now with our lien recovery program?
Samantha Grace, community improvement. So we do get the option when we demolish properties, before we actually file a lien, we'll send out a bill to the assessed owner. Sometimes we do have the owner, um, apply to go ahead and start repaying back the city, so they will pay back to the city every month.
Okay, and what's our success rate with that?
Uh, it's a hit and miss, depending on whether they're paying taxes or they're already letting it go to the state. So the ones that's, um, current on taxes, they're more so, um, joining the program. However, the ones that's already not paying taxes, it'll go to the state.
Okay, and once it goes to the state, it becomes a part of those, what, twenty-four hundred properties have been? Yeah. No, no, uh, yeah, but go ahead, refer to...
Mr. Foot?
Yeah, back to the question I asked yesterday, the, I think you gave, you may have given the information to the city clerk, but, uh, for the purposes of discussion, how many properties is the city got right now that, we know how many the state's got, how many does the city have that are, um, you know, abandoned?
Uh, that I'm not sure, I have to count the properties on the list.
Okay, you don't, you don't know the number?
No, not exactly.
Can you get me that number as soon as possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor?
I guess I was talking loud enough that I thought the mic was on. Uh, it's far less than the state, but we can get you that number, yeah. But, but let me, you, you doubt it?
Well, just what I've seen in, in my neighborhood.
Usually when I ask about a property, people's assumption that the city owns it is, you know, it's usually the state.
Well, I, I, I'm not speaking of, uh, city property, I'm speaking of those, uh, landowners that just abandon their properties, okay? We have a number, yeah, private owners and private businesses that have abandoned their properties that they may have a case on or whatever, there's a lot out there.
Okay, I thought we were talking about different things.
No, and it's, and it's, uh, I, I, I believe it's more than, uh, the state properties. So that all adds up to a big picture. State properties, uh, private landowners, abandoned properties, private business, abandoned properties. And then, in addition, we do have some city properties as well.
I, I was intending on saying something else, but I wanted that information.
Please, um...
Latonya Miller with planning. I misunderstood your question as well, I thought that you were referring to our surplus properties and at that last count, it was three twenty-five. As far as the ones that we have cases on, that is something that we would have to go in the system and do a count of and to determine whether or not they're, they're private owners or business owned. We do have a study that was probably done in twenty twenty-one, we're trying to get access to that data now that has all of the dilapidated properties and the owners. But again, we're trying to get our GIS person to get that information for us. So at this time, we don't have the exact numbers.
Mr. Mayor?
So the two things that I wanted to talk about was, one, is it always the best-case scenario that the lien attaches to the property? And is there a better way that it can attach to the owner? Because in some instances, if, if someone comes to the property or is interested in developing, you know, then it's just an added expenditure that, that makes their desire to invest and develop, you know, more difficult and, and a bigger investment, right? It would be ideal if the person who caused the problem was the person who had to pay, and if they want to, on an individual basis, negotiate that in the sale of a property, but it requires that it be purchased. I don't know how we, we can do that, but I'd like to investigate. And the other piece that I'd like to investigate is that the city of DC, one of the ways that they deal with the speculation where people purchase properties through tax sales and everything else and aren't interested in, you know, how they clean it up, they have a graduating scale of avalorum tax. So if you're, there's a, there's a avalorum tax if you're a resident, there is, and there's a different tax if you are someone, if you, if you occupy, if you occupy the resident, there's a higher level if you don't actually live in the home and, and you're looking at it as an investor, you know, to just renovate. And then there's even one based on when you're actually in construction. I don't remember verbatim, but I found it very, very interesting because it seemed to suit the purpose of not allowing people to just hold property, right? Without their paying a cost of holding their property and allowing it to be in, in a dilapidated state.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you have something to add, Mr. Martin?
The, the only thing, very minor on, on the issue of, of that, but, but to the extent that the lien is still the city's lien, you know, I think what we've done, or at least encouraged, if somebody comes along, wants to buy the property and the city can waive the lien, it's generally in the city's best interest to waive the lien and get somebody that's actually going to do something with the property to take it. Uh, the problem we've run into a couple of times now is that once they keep not paying the taxes and the property goes back to the state, uh, at that point, the city loses the ability to negotiate anything because it's not... Yeah, so that's where, that's where we've run into trouble. And I think Councilman Foot had sent one to our office that was like that, and it was unfortunate because it was somebody that we would have liked to help. But once the state has it, it takes about three years, but that's out of our hands at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Colleagues, any other comment on this? All right, Mr. Martin, you are up next, you're number forty-eight, and this says litigation. Do, do we need to go into executive session?
Yeah, we've covered all the public parts of it, so we've shortened it significantly, but I've still got a couple that I need to cover in executive session.
All right, colleagues, and I will take a motion to go into closed session for the purposes of discussing going into executive session to discuss litigation.
Some more? Second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second, uh, to go into closed session. All in favor? All right, we are now in closed session, if you are not relevant.